Okay, si hablan español y quieren tener interpretación al español pueden imprimir o pueden escoger el globo al fondo de la pantalla que tienen donde dice interpretation y luego español y van a poder escuchar todo en español.
Alright, so are we officially started here? I'm trying, I have like so many documents in front of me. Give me one second to bring up my reporting out for closed session. Hold on one moment. Okay.
Do we have Judy? I don't see her.
I don't believe, I don't have anyone in the waiting room, so.
Sorry to interrupt you, but I just don't see her on the.
Yeah, I don't.
She's not coming, I'll text her.
Okay. I will, yeah, well, you can look for her. I want to report out on closed session regarding student case number 20-19. There was a motion by trustee Kiff, seconded by trustee Potmussel, and it was carried with four eyes and one absent. I guess that would be abstained, one absent trustee by roll call vote to accept the readmission for student case number 20-19. There are no other items to report out from closed session. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, there are two adjustments in consent items I want to highlight. And if we can have Erica McGuire, the principal at Fitch Mountain, unmuted Karen. The first one is in item 13.3 C, the Hillsburg Elementary School Plan for Student Achievement. Erica, do you want to highlight what your changes were?
Yeah, sure. Can I, no, sorry, go ahead, Chris or Karen.
Um, do you want me to display those documents?
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay. I have the flag first because I was thinking we would be doing the pledge of allegiance first.
Oh, we forgot the pledge.
Oh, we got lots of flags. Yeah, we got.
So let me.
That's pledge and then we'll do adjustments to the agenda.
Is that okay? Okay, and pledge is Mike.
All right, please salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hardest part of the meeting right there.
It's usually the most awkward and now we're going to have swearing in virtually.
Oh.
A lot of rivalry. So, yeah.
Yeah, so as a matter of, well, do you, okay.
We need to do the adjustments.
Adjustments to the agenda, please, yes.
Erica, do you want to keep going?
Okay, yes. So there's been the SIPSA for elementary school. The data for the 1920 school year comes in, came in in the fall. However, Ms. Prince Lefranie and I worked on this document in the summer and honestly just forgot to go back in and change our conclusions based on the data that that came in for last school year. So so the changes are just adjustments to our conclusions based on the data. So you can see on this page, it was conclusions one and two, we did have just a change in the percentage of the makeup of our students. And then on the next page too, also about the percentage of our EL students. And so the conclusion one, just that we've had a steady decrease of about 10 percentage points a year of our percentage of EL students. And then also on page 14, it was just a change in also in the percentage of English language learners, which had been different. And so the conclusions had not been updated. So our apologies.
So this is related to the consent agenda?
Yes.
Correct. Thank you.
And then the other item, actually, there's another quick item and you don't need to display this page, I don't think, Karen. 13.3C. The Hillsburg High School Plan had a teacher, oh, you have it, had a teacher on it who had not attended and isn't necessarily part of the site council. We have governance council and embedded in the governance council is the site council. So we dropped that teacher's name as part of the committee and she was, she understood. So anyway, so that was one minor change in the high schools. So.
Okay, and any other adjustments to the agenda?
No.
Okay. Now we're going to move on to the oath of office. And I can't do all three together, right? We have to do them all individually.
Yeah, you do them all individually.
No, that's, I think that's fine. Okay. Now I gotta find, hold on, my document, my oath document. I don't have it memorized. Here we go.
You missed like the picture moment in front of the days now, right? Like this is
No.
Different.
I know, I know, that is.
Recreate it.
It's not.
Recreate it here when we're back in person. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, just for the photo, just holding our hands.
Photo op.
Exactly. So shall we do Crystal first? Okay, Crystal, so you raise, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I and your name.
I, Crystal Lopez Bardo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will, I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Elba bum, bravo.
Yeah.
Excellent. And Rose, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Rose McAllister.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take, oh, sorry, that I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Yay.
Yay.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Congratulations to both of you.
Yes, welcome.
Thank you, Chris.
And last but not least, Ariselli gets re sworn in.
So now Jamie, you are officially not a trustee and you can walk off the days.
All right, I'm on, I'm walking off.
You're gonna like pretend like you're going downstairs.
I'm sorry.
And just real quick, Jamie, thank you again. We are going to miss you.
It's been one of my greatest honors. Thank you all.
And.
Thank you, Jamie.
And Jamie, you still need to come by. We have a.
I know, I know. Thank you, I will.
I can drop it off too.
It's okay, I'll come by. Thanks.
We wear masks.
Okay, and then Ariselli, re swearing in. Raise your right hand. I.
We have to elect her first.
No, 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 this is just for her reelection.
Oh, you're right. Excuse me, I'm sorry. She has to go twice. Yes.
Oh, yeah, we can't just do, oh, this is so fun. You'll have it memorized. I'll have it memorized. Okay, so I state your name.
I, Ariselli Roma Flores.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Yay, bravo. All right. Okay, now I go back to here. And then now we do the offices, yes?
Yes, so we need.
Oh, so I will move. Right, I, yeah, moving on to the next item, I will move, do a motion for Ariselli Roma Flores to be president of the board for the next term.
We have a second.
I will second that motion.
Seconding by Mike. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right. And then we swear in, Ariselli, to the president, yes?
Yep.
So we literally have to do this again. All right. So official.
Crazy.
All right, raise your right hand, Ariselli. Okay, I state.
I, Ariselli Roma Flores.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of California, of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Woo.
All right. Nobody else has to be sworn in, so it'll go a little quicker.
The invisible gavel goes to Ariselli.
All right, Ariselli, you are in charge.
All right. Let's see.
Per board bylaw, Mike Potmussel is next up for vice president. So we'd be looking for a motion.
So I'll make a motion. I move that Mike Potmussel be vice president of the board for the next term.
Rose seconds.
All in favor?
I.
Okay, great. And the secretary of the board for the bylaws is.
That's me. Yeah.
And you have to be elected in as well.
I do have to be elected, yeah.
So I move to elect Chris Van den Hiller, superintendent, to be secretary to the board.
Crystal's trying to get in.
Was it Crystal? Was it Donna? Was it Mike?
Give it to Crystal. Yeah, get her name in the minutes there. Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
I.
Okay, great. And set time for place, set time, place for regular meetings?
We have the board meeting dates that are already approved at six o'clock and they're to be on Zoom teleconference or in person when it is safe to do so at Hillsburg City Hall.
The agenda does not specify the dates, the whatever second, whatever, does that matter?
Last month.
Okay, thank you.
So we just have to, it's a formality we have to do. So.
Understand. Yep, thank you.
Okay.
Do we do us?
We do need to vote on it for time and place. Yeah.
So moved.
Go second.
All second.
All second, sorry.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
Great. All right. So we are now at elect representative and alternate to the Sinema County Committee on School District Organization.
Yes, so we periodically have to elect a representative and alternate to this committee, which has never met as long as I've been superintendent. So it is a very low commitment thing to volunteer for. So we'd be looking for a volunteer and an alternate to volunteer. This is a, this is a group that gets together when districts are considered reconsidering, consolidating. And they get together on reorganizing, so.
Well, that's certainly a little more high level topic these days.
Yeah.
I'll volunteer.
Okay.
And I can be the alternate.
So we need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
I.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, and appointments to service board liaison too. We need appointments for the Hillsburg Elementary Education Foundation, half, the superintendent policy review committee.
Let's do one. Yeah, so typically half is the president, but we've talked to Ariselli and you have your school board meetings for your job.
Yeah.
Those same nights. So we would, we would say it goes to the vice president then as, you know, and then if there's anyone interested in being the alternate, should Mike not be able to make it? And we could have that listed also. Anybody?
I volunteer.
Thanks, Mike. Anybody want to be the alternate, just in case?
I can be alternate.
Awesome. Okay. And then, so we'll vote on these all as a slate once we go down the list, okay? Superintendent Policy Review Committee. This is the committee that gets together hopefully about once a month, maybe a little less. It's been a little less with the pandemic. And we, there are constant board updates coming because it changes the law and sometimes we're doing our own. And so we get batches of board policy updates from the California School Boards Association that we then examine and tailor to fit our, our own practices. So this is a lot of reading, but it's a good opportunity to learn the innards of the school district and their workings. And also, if you have insomnia, it's a good way to solve that. So anybody, we need two representatives for the superintendent board policy committee, and this is definitely a time commitment. So. Rose is.
Yeah. And I'll, I'll be on too.
Okay, awesome. D-LAC, so our District English Language Advisory Committee, this is a very active group. It's grown and I'm super pleased in the direction it's headed. And it's really important that we have a board liaison there and an alternate for when they can't make it, just to facilitate good relationships. So looking for volunteers. Mike's interested. Okay.
I'll be alternate.
Awesome.
And as an alternate, you can also come. It'll have.
Yeah, you can call Crystal anytime. It's not, yeah, you're just not required because you're not the person, right? So.
I will be.
Chamber of Commerce, this is, we periodically attend the Chamber of Commerce meetings, just to give updates on the school board or the school district and things that are going on. It is an interesting conversation every time. It is at eight in the morning on second Thursday, I think of the month. I'll get you the exact time. It's on a Thursday morning though. So.
It's at eight AM.
Yeah.
Thursdays are hard for me, sorry.
Okay. Anybody else?
It's on, it's on Zoom now.
It's on Zoom now and it is in person at the Chamber of Commerce, which is behind H2 when it's in person.
I'm interested in doing it. I just have to be sure that my kids go back to school before I would be expected to show up in person to the meeting.
So why don't we, we can, you could be the first, then we can take an alternate and if need be, we can switch.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll do that again. I haven't done that for a few years.
Yeah, it's, it's good.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Superintendent Budget Resource Committee, this week, you know, I've only actually called it once where we had a committee meeting about budget. We may end up doing that in the future here with, you know, just all the uncertainty around budget right now in the world. So the, the, this is one board representative to meet on this group that would help us make budget decisions should we need to convene it.
I'll do that one.
And then Curriculum Council meets several times a year. This is with, you know, it's run by Aaron Fender, our director of curriculum and instruction with teachers, and I think there's a couple parent reps on it. And they go over a new curriculum that we're looking at or adopting and help us make curricular decisions. So it's an interesting conversation.
I'd like to be a part of that one as well.
Okay, any other appointments or anything of interest that anybody wants to talk about? Sometimes we create them. We haven't in a while, though. I don't have anything off the top of my head, so. Okay, so then we would need a motion for the slate as we just indicated with the volunteers in a second and we can vote people in.
I'll make question.
Second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Crystal. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion approved. Thank you. Update Board of Trustees Priority List.
So we've, we've included the priority list of the events that we normally attend or that you normally attend as trustees, and then the recommended events. So things like high school graduation, we try to have all the trustees there present, et cetera. Are there any questions or anything that anybody believes we need to change in our priority list?
Not at this time.
Okay, hearing none, we can change it anytime, obviously. So hearing none, if there would be someone, if someone wants to move and we would, we'd consider it, you know, vote on it and it'd be done.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. All second.
No, thank you, Crystal. Do a second.
Mike seconded.
Mike seconded. Thank you, Mike. All right, all in favor?
I.
I. Thank you. Mission carries.
Awesome. Good job. That was, that was actually pretty quick through the organizational meeting. And we're going to move right into awards and special recognition. So Donna, you are leaving us as president of the board, but not leaving the board. And I just want to say thank you. I will tell everybody, every time Donna is president, we have crazy things happen in the district. So this time around, I won't talk about what happened last time, but this time around we had COVID and Donna became president in December and COVID hit in March. And so Donna and I have a lot of phone calls because I usually report everything that's going on straight to the president. And so it's, it's always a pleasure, Donna. I enjoy having you on the board. I've enjoyed having you as president. Typically, we give the president a gavel, like a wooden gavel or, you know, plaque or something, but you've gotten that before. And Donna was joking about us getting her a car.
That's the car with the big red bow. I've never.
It's a big ask. It's a big ask. These aren't paid anything besides water.
It's an upgrade from the water bottle. I know, but.
Car with a big red bow, I believe, was the ask, right?
Yeah.
So we got you a big red bow. And I got you a Porsche to go on it. So we kind of reversed it. We reversed the request. Okay, so it's a Porsche. It's a nice one. It would crush the car though, so we had to, we had to do it.
I like the bow. The bow's nice.
But anyway, we did get you a little bit, some, some, just some little things to, in appreciation that Karen will get to you. But just really want to thank you for your guidance and leadership and steadiness through this crazy year that we've had. So again, thank you for leading the district. It's been a pleasure working with you in that capacity.
Yes, well, I only hope that now that I'm not president, COVID just goes away.
You do.
Right?
There we go.
You're going to tie this to me then. There you go.
Who needs a vaccine?
Yeah, exactly. Now, it's been a pleasure, really. It's always a pleasure working with this team and working with this district. So.
Appreciate it.
If I can make a comment, if that's allowed.
Absolutely.
New president. Well, no, Donna, I just want to thank you. Your leadership terrific, has been terrific this year. Particularly once we got into the Zoom stuff, how you pull it off, I have no idea. I'm so, hopefully we're out of this in another year, if I ever take over. But again, thank you, because the meetings have been very successful.
Long, they've been long.
Well, but very fruitful, I think is the point. And I think, you know, under your leadership, as, as the ship turns, you've helped guide that in the, in the correct direction. I really, really appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for modeling for me, Donna. Really appreciate it.
My pleasure.
I'm going to be counting on your guidance.
Yeah, yeah. Now we move on.
All right. That was our hint. Okay.
Celebrating our successes after.
We have, I'm going to let Aaron Fender do the introductions here, but we are so grateful for our partnership with the city and the program that they've been able to provide for our kids and our families during the pandemic. And I'm going to stop talking and let Aaron talk and then hand it over to the guys that have joined us.
Yeah, you, you guys have heard me singing these praises since the summer when we were in the planning process. And my goodness, what a savior to our community and to helping to support and educate our kids. So tonight we've got with us Dave Janz, Garrett Pedegro, and Rich Schwartz. They're the heroes here. We want to celebrate the success and the partnership that they've provided for our students and their families so they can work. You guys will remember and welcome new trustees Lopez and McAllister. I think you're both somewhat familiar with this program of being community members and so I'm not going to go through it too much, the background, but they've been providing full day distance learning support and enrichment care from 7:30 in the morning until well after 5:00 PM since we opened our schools for a ton of kids. And you're going to say, I don't want to steal their thunder here. A lot of our students and also students from around the community at the Foss Creek Community Center, probably some of the most hardworking people I know. You know, just really making it happen. And I cannot thank them enough for their partnership and the care that they're putting into this and supporting our kids and their families. So I'll have a chance to say a few more things at another time, but I do want to turn this over to Dave, Garrett, and Rich.
Thanks, Aaron. Good evening, Madam Board President, members of the, members of the board. Before we begin, I just have to take a moment to congratulate the outgoing trustees and the incoming. As Aaron mentioned, Crystal is one of our former, current rock star employees. I'm very excited to see her take this next step in leadership. You're all in good hands. So congratulations, Crystal and Rose.
Yes, so proud of you, Crystal. Proud, proud, proud.
So as Aaron mentioned, this has been a program that's been in the works since this summer. We've been having ongoing communication with the district and with our partners at Corzon Hillsburg on how we can best support our students during this crazy year that we're in. Really, the goals of this program was twofold, really to provide a safe and enriching environment for students to complete their distance learning and enable parents to go back to work knowing that their kids are in that safe environment. So what I'd like to do is I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues Garrett and Rich, who are going to talk through, kind of give you an overview of the program, the day to day operations. They really are the, the staff that make this happen on a daily basis. I'd like to turn it over to Garrett and Rich. Mark Demig is our community services director. He extends his, his hello and he's sorry you can't be here. We have a Parks and Rec Commission meeting that's happening simultaneously. So with that, we'd like to turn it over to Garrett and Rich.
Karen, do we have the PowerPoint up?
No.
Yeah, it's up on our screens.
So.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you, Dave, and thank you, members of the Hillsburg Unified School District Board for having us this evening. My name is Garrett Pertigo. I am the recreation supervisor here with the community services department. And as Dave mentioned, we're here to give you a little bit of a snapshot as best we can to help you kind of capture and see everything that we've been working on here at the Distance Learning Care Center since school began. So we'll get things going on the next slide here. And for our CPG 2.0 Distance Learning Care, the program began on August 19th, which was the first day of school with Hillsburg Unified. We had that brief little speed bump there when the LNU fire started. So we missed a couple of days there right at the very beginning. But the program is run with a collaborative partnership with Hillsburg Unified School District and Corzon Hillsburg. The program runs Monday through Friday from 7:30 AM to 5:30 PM. And what that day typically looks like is 7:30 in the morning is when the district bus transportation drops students off here. The students are then taken to their classrooms. They are processed through health screenings. They are then taken into their cohort rooms, which is rooms of 12 with two staff in the morning. And they're on their Zoom classes from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM daily. During a normal year, non-COVID year, we partner with the school district to run the ACEs grant. So in the afternoon, you're seeing more of the traditional after school programming that you would typically see during a, a non-COVID year where we're doing enrichment programming that is very STEM based. We're doing cooking projects, art projects, even. cooking projects, art projects, even the kids engaged through the afternoon. All in all, we have 110 participants enrolled in the program. We have part-time staffing that features 44 program staff and five facility attendants. The program staff are the ones that are in the rooms with the students. They're, they're getting them on their Zoom classes, helping them connect with their teachers, helping them get the special lessons, helping tutor them, help them on their, their ST math, or their, their reading. And then the facility attendants are coming in each evening and deep cleaning the facility so that each day the students are coming into a clean classroom to help limit any potential spread of COVID. We have smaller class sizes due to the COVID-19 requirements. And as I mentioned, we have dedicated staff with each group. And just based off all this, we are in close collaboration and contact with Sonoma County Health Department as situations arise. All right, we'll move on to next one here. So as I mentioned, we have 110 students that are enrolled. Ninety of those 110 students are HUSD students. And then we have the, the rest of the students made up from 10 other schools that are in the Sonoma County area. This program requires regular coordination between the schools themselves and program staff. That includes support from the HUSD administration, the teachers, food services, the paraprofessionals, behavior specialists, and transportation. This is always being in constant communication, whether it be bi-weekly meetings that we have with Aaron Fender, with the principals at the elementary school in Fitch Mountain Campus. We're in constant communication with the Transportation Director. We have a staff member who is always in constant contact with food services. So it's always in motion and we're, we're always doing what we can to make it a good experience for the parents, knowing that they have to be to work, but also trying to make it a seamless transition for the children, especially those TK kindergarteners, that this is really their first time experiencing school. Okay, I'm going to pass this on to Rich Schwartz, our Recreation Coordinator. I believe he's still on.
I am. Thank you, members of the board. I wanted to read you some of the comments that we've gotten from some of the parents and participants in our program. We have Elizabeth Solozano and Ruben Sanchez, who are parents of one of the children in our program. And they said that Jacob's dad and I have to work and being able to trust the place we send Jacob each day gives us a peace of mind that we would not know what to do without. We are so grateful for Camp HBG 2.0 and truly hope that it will continue to be a place for Jacob to thrive until school can be reopened safely. And then we have Alexa Mondragon, who is a fourth grader, one of our participants. And she is really outgoing and she liked that she could come here, have fun with her classmates, and that the staff can help her and the classmates with homework when they need help. And then I also hear daily comments from parents who are so thankful for this program that it relieves stress from their family. They don't have to deal with the constant Zoom classes, the learning, our teaching of their children, and they're doing the classwork. They like having a place for their kids to go where they're safe and where they can play with other kids instead of being home alone. They could play with other kids in their cohort. And that's the main comment I also get from the children is having friends during the day that they can study and play with safely inside their little cohorts. So those are the main things that we hear here at Camp HBG.
Thanks, Rich and Garrett. Do you want to take a moment? As Garrett mentioned, the, the requirements with COVID-19 requires us to be in a much smaller staff to student ratio than we normally would be for any of our programs. So with that comes in increased cost of programs, definitely not an inexpensive program to run. We're so grateful that we're able to utilize the ACES grant funding to help support this program. But in addition to keep this, to keep this program accessible for all families within our community, our goal at the beginning of this was to not turn away any family based on their ability to pay. So we wanted to make sure this was open to all students and families that needed this service. So during the fall session, we were able to raise $162,000. This came from community donations. And as you can see that list in front of you, the generosity of this community always continues to amaze me. Just unbelievably grateful for people coming out to support this program and this family. So we say, want to say thank you to everyone that has helped support this program today. Moving on to the next slide, we do, on that note, we are gearing up for spring semester, which you all know starts January 4. We know that the students will still be in distance learning format for that. So we are programming from now and scheduling, planning out for the rest of the school year, not knowing what's, what is in front of us. But in order to do that, we do need to raise a bit more money. As I mentioned, we're going to try to put that ACES money to good use, make sure it's supporting this program. But we anticipate we'll, we'll need another, another $150,000 to keep this program at that affordable price point for all families and keep our current students as well as be accessible for any other students that may need this in the spring semester. So we did launch a fundraising campaign yesterday. We'll continue to get information out. But if anyone is interested in learning more about the program, feel free to reach out to me directly. Donations are being filtered through Corzon Healdsburg, but we're happy to work with anyone that may have, have questions on that front. And so that's the end of the slides, but I just want to take a moment. I want to give a very special thank you to, to Aaron, Erica McGuire, Jeff Franny, Diane, Kristen, the whole team at Healdsburg Unified, who has helped support us through all of this. As Garrett mentioned, you know, this is, this is new territory for all of us. We've never been in this scenario before. At the end of the day, we are trying to provide a safe, first and foremost, a safe environment, but also a functional environment. So kids are able to complete their schoolwork. So we really cherish and rely on that communication from the district on helping guide us on what works best to, to make sure that these students are successful. And of course, all the teachers who have adapted their learning style, worked with our staff to get us schedules, help us improve our process with the students. So we do want to say thank you to everyone at the district who has helped support and made this, make this program possible. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions you may have about the program.
I have a question. I, I'm sorry if I missed this. Where are you housed? Are you at a school site or are you at the Healdsburg Community Center?
That's a great question. I apologize for not clarifying that from the get-go. So we're at the Healdsburg Community Center, which is the old Foss Creek Elementary School. So our facility here is set up nicely to support a program like this. We are able to host up to 10 individual classrooms or cohorts of groups and keep those groups within their, their specified cohort and not co-mingle. And then we also have the resources of the Blacktop, the Garden. So we're an old school, so we're able to duplicate some of those familiar opportunities for the students that they're used to.
Thank you, Dave.
I just wanted to recognize you and your staff. You, you've worked closely with us. I mean, anybody who's got anything in person going right now has had a COVID issue pop up, right? And you have done a good job in mitigating those and addressing them very quickly. And I, I believe there's been no spread within the program, you know, like it's happened where somebody was exposed outside of it. And so we had to quarantine. But I've just been so impressed with how you guys have been able to maintain that health and safety, which I think is everybody's first concern. And I feel really good about recommending it to families as a result. So kudos to you and your staff for that, because it's a huge service for parents to be able to put their kids in a safe place where they know they're going to be okay. So thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. Very appreciated.
Yeah, I want to give, I want to give, as a former current employee also, and you know, I've been in the classroom too. I just want to give a huge shout out to all the staff that are working in the classroom. It takes a lot of dedication to be, you know, working with students. It's really hard in these circumstances when you have a student who is crying because they might miss mom and you can't give them a hug or, you know, they just, they, sometimes they just need a hug, especially I'm thinking of those like TK kindergarteners and first graders who don't know what school is like. They, you know, those TK and those kindergarteners who, school is Zoom. So I just want to give a huge shout out to those staff who are in the classroom. I know Dave, Garrett, and Rich are always on top of the logistics, but those staff who constantly communicate with the parents and with you all, I'm just super grateful for, for that and for providing a service to families who really need it right now and who, if did, if this didn't exist, but those kids would be sitting at home probably alone, right? You know, on Zoom, because those parents have to work. So thank you. Thank you for that. And I'm super thankful for Cota Son too, for providing these services without a cost for many families.
Yes.
And it's a, it, it really is a model program in terms of the partnership between the school district, the city, and Corzon. So I hope we can continue in that vein in the future post-pandemic as well, so.
Yeah, I think it's worth saying, you know, just gratitude, gratitude, gratitude to the team. You know, like Crystal said, from the teachers and the staff that are working every day to the, to the people who are pulling off the organization. And this has not come to, at a cost to the district. The grant is supposed to bear, it doesn't cover after-school care in a regular year. It's, you know, roughly $150,000. It's a pittance of what's needed. They've said, all right, we'll do it. And they've worked with Cota's own and our community partners to raise the money. So, you know, this is a beautiful thing for our kids. And I just thank, you know, our community for stepping up and donating. And, and like Dave said, we do have an active fundraiser going on right now. So the best way to say thanks, especially this time of year, you know, in the season of giving, $5, $10, you know, whatever you can give can help support a kid to attend this program so their family can work. So thank you all. And, you know, I hope that people might be able to make a donation too.
I have a quick question. Do we have any other children on a waitlist? Or do you, Dave, are we pretty much servicing all the kids and families that have, have signed up?
Yeah, thank you.
On the waitlist, right now, we have, I believe it's four more HUSD students and three non-HUSD, like Alexander Valley, students. It's a staffing issue at this point to open up our ninth room. We don't get enough staff that can work the morning shift. So until that happens, unfortunately, kind of where we're at.
Yeah.
Well, they, they generally have been able to accommodate all of our students. The waitlist is not long and they don't spend long on it. But it takes four adults a day to run a room because you need two staff members in a morning shift and two staff members in an afternoon shift, plus all of the organizational management. District is bringing food, people have to deal with sorting food. There's the management communicating with families. So it's a huge staffing list. So anybody who wants to work with kids, head on down, go talk to, go talk to one of these fellows about getting a job.
Well, and I know there, I know when we had an update in the fall, it was at like 70 or 80. So you already, you know, it's, it's, you've obviously been growing as the need has grown. So again, and I just echo everything. I think this is an absolute model, model program, you know, looking at the needs and working together to fill those needs as for our community. So thank you. Thank you to everyone involved.
I'll just second all that. It is a model program. It's great. The partnership is outstanding. And again, thank you. And thanks to Corzon. And thanks to the district people, because they're not just sitting back waiting for things to happen. So for, for all, it all works together and it keeps working. And I guess it's going to keep working for a while. But again, thank you so much. Excellent, excellent work.
Awesome. Well, thank you all. Thank you, Garrett and Rich and Dave for being here. And say hi to Mark. And I think Chewy, Chewy works for them too, right, Crystal? Yeah, I saw him on earlier. He dropped off, though, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
On and off, right? On and off.
But thank you for, for being here tonight and for all you're doing. We really appreciate it. And do, do pass on our gratitude to your staff. It's, it is, it's an amazing program and service to this community, so.
We definitely, we definitely will. Thank you for having us this evening. We'll be the first to admit, we cannot wait until things are back to normal and the kids are back to school. But in the meantime, we look forward to our continued partnership and picking up here with Semester 2 in January.
All right. I'll see you there. So thanks.
Thank you.
Public comment, someone needed to mute. Public comments on nine agenda items. Do we have any, Karen? If you would like to make a comment, you can chat in the chat. You can request to do so and it'll go to Karen who will let us know.
No public comment.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, approval of the consent agenda.
I, I move to approve the consent agenda with the changes that were specified earlier to the SIPSAS by, you know, Erica.
And I'll second.
In favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Crystal, did you say hi?
Hi. I did, but I was muted. Sorry.
Okay, I'm moving on to public comments on agenda items.
Yeah, so if you would like to address the board, same, same thing for the last round of public comments on any of the agenda items, just chat Karen and she will let us know if there any comes in. And typically, your comment would come after the staff presentation on the board item. So.
I don't have any public comment as of right now.
Okay.
All right, 14.1, student learning. We have resolution number 21-10, declaring instructional ethic due to COVID-19.
So we've declared this resolution now twice, unfortunately. And we have the same resolution before you intentionally without a date. I have been wrestling with what to suggest as a recommendation, to be quite honest, but forecasting ahead, we are working on a plan for reopening that'll be tied to metrics. So we will no longer be waiting for a date. And when we have that, hopefully in January for approval, then we can stop doing this resolution. However, given the circumstances that we're experiencing now in the entire nation, especially the state of California, it seems unlikely that we will meet the threshold for reopening, which is being in the red for actually four weeks straight. That's what is legally required of schools. So we have to be in the red tier for four weeks straight. And we're, as I think everyone knows, well into the purple tier, twice and triple over. So we most likely aren't going to get to a place where we can reopen at the end of January. So I think my recommendation for you at this point would be mid-February. And I was thinking of, I believe it's Friday, February 12th, as, as a potential date where we could set for now, gives parents something to plan for in the next month and a half. And then before then, we would hope to bring a reopening plan that'll be tied to metrics and it'll be a different system for waiting to reopen.
Chris, is that just before the long weekend, after the what?
It's right before that long weekend, yeah. So February 12th is a Friday. President's Day is Monday, the 15th. And I hate to say this, but even setting that date seems naive, right? We could certainly, I know Santa Rosa City just declared through the whole month of February last night, or Monday night. I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to that. We can always change course should there be a miracle. But at this point, I do think it's in, it's in, you know, it's in everybody's best interest, teachers, parents, students, just to know, we are planning on distance learning, at least through the month of January and a part of February. Again, we need four weeks straight of red tier metrics in Sonoma County for us to even consider opening schools.
So this is an action item. So do we have a motion to approve?
Well, we need a date, so.
I would do.
Yeah, we need to, we need to choose a date.
Um, I'm comfortable with the February, what did you say, 16th before or after that?
February 12th.
Might as well do it. Well, yeah, I guess that would mean the 16th.
It means the first day could be the 16th if things improve dramatically, right?
Um, I, I mean, I'm, I don't know, ever the optimist, I guess. We can always read, you know, extend that when we meet in January, if, you know.
When's our January board meeting?
On January 20th, if I'm not mistaken.
It is, yes.
But, yeah.
I don't, I hate to be an a-sayer. I just don't see after Christmas, Hanukkah, New Year's. I mean, I could be optimistic and say, go for it, but I really believe we'll end up changing it.
Well, the hope, Mike, is that before Jan, you know, whether we choose the end of January, the February 12th, or the beginning of March, we would have a different plan that is tied to metrics. So people know what to look for and expect. That wouldn't just be choosing dates, right? So really, at this point, we're just choosing a date and knowing that my goal would be in the January meeting to have a reopening plan. Hopefully, it might be more into February, depending on how negotiations go. But a plan tied to metrics, that's no longer just arbitrarily throwing darts with best, best dates, so.
And metrics being caseload and positivity rate.
So the, the exact metrics that you say on, on the state blueprint, which are the, so the positivity, the positivity rates on new tests, right? And then the, the load in terms of. And then the, the load in terms of the, the metric is how many cases per hundred thousand in your county, right? And so the magic number for Sonoma County is seven, right? We want seven cases per hundred thousand. If you recall the last board presentation I did in detail. So we're looking at, you need 35 or less new cases a day to reach that metric. And when I looked in the newspaper this morning, we're in the 200s. So, yeah.
Yeah. But Chris, would that give you enough time to create that plan if we did select February?
It's conceptualized and we're working on it. Yeah. So, you know.
So you're comfortable.
I'm, I'm okay. I, I think we definitely be able to bring it in February. If not January, so.
Chris, and if we hit the red tier, we have to wait a certain period before opening, right? I believe.
Yeah. So we, businesses can't reopen till two weeks of, of red, right? So you're not actually, you're in the red tier metric wise, but you're, you can't reopen in the red tier parameters until you have two straight weeks. For schools, it's four.
Okay.
Yeah. So we have to have four straight weeks. So you could go in for two weeks and then it goes back to purple and then you have to start it over again, right? So it's, it's a, it's a little bit of a confusing system that way.
But once you have it, right, once you, you're in, if we go back into purple, you are.
That's, that's something that we're going to talk about. Legally, you can stay open, but we may choose if we go to purple to, to close just for safety reasons. So that's something that we'll discuss when we bring the reopening plan. Yeah.
So can I, I'll make a motion and we can keep discussing. I, I move that we approve this with the February 12th date.
I'll second.
And then if there's more discussion.
Any, any other discussion? I will say I agree with Mike. We're probably not going to meet the February 12th date, but it's okay, you know? Yeah.
I, I guess my, my point is to alert the parents and obviously staff. As soon as we know, we're not going to meet that date.
Yeah. And, and my hope is well before February 12th, we're, we're, at least before we're informing them of a different way that we're going to measure it and we'll give them updates on as things change. Yeah.
So what? School would open on the 16th.
Correct. If all went really well. So, yeah.
Okay. So we have a, we have a, Donna motioned and we have a second. I'm sorry.
Chris.
Thank you, Crystal. All right. I'm all in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
We'll be doing this again.
This is a, this is, this is a roll call vote.
Oh, it is. Yeah.
Go ahead and try to say everybody's names here. Trustee Del Rey.
I.
Trustee Lopez.
I.
Trustee Potnissel.
I.
Trustee McAllister.
I.
President Romo Flores.
I.
Student trustee Vikram Johnson.
I.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Moving on to 14.1B equity and school culture update.
Yeah. So this is our standing item, highlighting the equity work that's going on in the district. This one has actually, we're going to talk about two things. I'm going to give you homework and then want to highlight some professional development opportunities that are coming. And Karen's got a PowerPoint she's going to pull up. You can go to the next slide, please Karen. So trustees, we have purchased a book for you. Anybody in the audience who is interested, feel free to pick it up and read along with us. It is recommended by the Acosta Educational Partnership. So they say this is one of the foundational books in ethnic studies work. And it really, you know, when we talk about ethnic studies, again, we are not talking about a standalone class. We're talking about an approach to education that is culturally relevant to all of our population. And so the chapters one and two in the book transformative ethnic studies in schools, curriculum, pedagogy and research by Slieder and Zavala is your homework trustees. So I'd love for you to read it and we might have a brief discussion of those chapters at the next meeting in January. And I am still working with Acosta to have several, they would like to do two or three 90-minute sessions with the board around equity and anti-racism with the hope of building an awareness and being able to find an equity and anti-racism policy for the district. So we're hopefully going to firm some dates up in January and February to begin that work with them. The next part is around the ethnic studies. And I'm going to have Aaron Fender jump in and help on this item. But we are about to launch the first step in our, our ethnic studies journey. As you recall, there's a, there's a cadence in a system that Acosta likes to use in terms of the different professional developments that are available and how you do them. And the first step is a voluntary one. We are so thankful for Corazon Hillsburg and Hef, who are helping us by paying for the entirety of this program. And so we are currently about to launch that first step. Hopefully this next spring, well, next winter and spring.
I can speak to it a little bit. I'm, I'm really excited. You know, we've been.
I was waiting for you to jump on.
Yeah, we're, we're very, we've been very careful and cognizant that our teachers need to remain focused on distance learning and that they've had a lot to learn and they're working as hard as they've ever in their lives. And trying to balance that with bringing something like this forward. And we feel like we're kind of at a place now. And so I'm thrilled to report that I put out the first detailed information to our teachers and administrators to sign up yesterday mid-afternoon. As of this afternoon, when I checked, we already have 13 teachers who have signed up. And they are representative from all four of our school sites. And so we will be kicking this off in January. And the participants saw on the write-up and is in this board report is, is part of the backup. About an hour and a half to two hours, once a month, in an afternoon for, so for a six-session series. So they know that that's what they're committing to. And I'm really excited already. We've got 13 teachers out of our 90-ish saying, I'm ready to go, want to do this. And I think we're going to pick up at least a couple more, you know, send it out yesterday and it's finals and it's the end of the semester. So we're going to give this through winter break for people to think about and make a commitment and kick it off in, in January. Where there'll be a session each month.
13 is fantastic. We were, we were, you know, we're kind of privately hoping for 10 to 12. So we're already well on our way. So that's, that's a good indication.
Yeah. And it's nice. It's representative in those 13 of our four sites as well, that there's elementary, junior, high and high school teachers.
So in your backup, there is a description of the course that they'll be doing with the teachers. So you can read more about it.
I have a question. Is it possible or is it, does it make sense for board members to zoom in and watch? If not participate?
I think you guys are going to have your own special thing as board members. My, my, my gut reaction, you know, I would need to check, but my gut reaction would be that this series is really going to be focused on instruction. And I think that teachers are going to be challenged to think really hard about who they are and how we're working with students. And I think it might be a safer environment.
I understand.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just being nosy.
Yeah. We'll get you though. We're getting you training too as board member.
Karen, you got the next slide? Um, so I wanted to pose this to you. I've had actually some conversations with former President Del Rey and current President Roma Flores around this. You know, the real work is not having a standing equity agenda item, right? The real work is making sure that we have an equity lens in all that we do. And I wanted to point out that the next three items are very much equity items, right? So the distance learning action plan, what are we doing to meet the needs of our students who are not, not showing engagement and, and academic progress during distance learning? I highlighted last month for you, the fact that Latino students were disproportionately represented in the failing grades that we saw at the first progress report. Same with the youth true survey. This is true equity work. It breaks out attitudinal analysis about school based on demographic for the secondary schools. So that's some fascinating data to take a look at and we'll, Diane Conger is going to walk us through that. And then big picture learning, we've actually, the last few days for big picture learning have been amazing. We've seen some really great student work and transformation of the Marcy Becerra program that serves those kids who just weren't making it in our traditional program. And again, that is true equity work. And so we're really excited to bring all those to you. And one of the things that Donna and Arsalie and I talked about was instead of having a standing equity item that we, where we have the student learning section on the, on the board agenda, we changed that header to be student learning slash equity and culture, equity and school culture in a recognition that everything we do that comes under that section should be done with a lens of equity. So I wanted to pose that to you all as a kind of a closing remark. And, you know, I can take questions and any thoughts about that as we close off this item.
Well, you know how I feel, Chris. I personally love that idea because I do think it needs to be the lens that we look through, that we're doing all of our work through and but I also really want to encourage us to continuously be looking at data because that, to me, that's how you really identify equity issues and address equity issues is by making sure that that needle is moving and that all students are experiencing success. But I love that, the idea of having that header as student learning equity and school culture personally.
I agree too with Arastelene with Chris. I think that by reserving these 10 minutes to, to talk about equity, we're not giving enough attention to it. And we're assuming that we are not looking at everything with an equity lens, right? And I think we have to look at everything that we're doing with an equity lens. Whether it's approving a new class, like who are we funneling into these classes? To our budget, to our attendance, to our grades. So I think we have to look at everything with an equity, equity lens and not just reserve these 10 minutes, right? So the conversations about equity should be embedded in everything that we're doing.
And Arastelie, I, I, do I remember that you had suggested that on every cover page of the action items on the board, we should be adding a, you know, via fiscal impact and recommendations and board notes. And we probably should be putting.
The impact.
Yeah. So every, every item in the section, we'd add the equity impact as part of the cover page, Karen.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you. I forgot about that.
Yeah. Thank you, Donna. I was just expecting it to happen.
Good suggestion.
All right. So you have homework for me and you're giving us homework on the cover pages. And we will, you know, hold us to it. We definitely, we endeavor to have an equity lens and all we do as a staff here at the district. And I know you do too as trustees and, and we can do that, you know, through mutual accountability. So I know we're committed to it and I'm excited to continue working with you and with Acosta Educational Partnership. It's going to be a lot of fun with them and to see what we can accomplish. So please do your homework.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You know, well, can I?
Yeah.
Add on, in this topic, I know we'll be talking later during the board comments about CSBA. But I'm wondering if, I mean, I saw some really interesting examples of equity policies or portions of equity policies and presentations. And I'm wondering if that might be another homework assignment is to kind of gather, you know, some of those from other schools. And, you know, as, as we're doing our work and doing our, reviewing our CSBA notes and whatever. Anyway, just, just an idea because there was some really, there's, there's, there's good work being done out there. So.
So, yeah, in the interest of the Brown Act, if you wanted to individually send me things that you found useful, that you think would be useful for our work, I can be kind of the library that we then, you know, can create. So.
Great. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you.
Well, that's great. Thank you, Donna. Okay. So moving on to 14.1C Hillsburg High School and Hills, Virginia High's school action plans to address issues with distance learning.
All right. So as we spoke of last month, we, you know, we showed there was a clear issue and we talked to you about how staff was working, teachers in collaboration with the administration to figure out ways to address some of these issues. And so I've got Principal Halliday and Principal Miller here to talk through what they've got going. I mean, a lot of it's already been done since we're two days away from the semester. But what they've done and worked with on staff to make changes to hopefully elicit more student success and distance learning. So why don't we start with the junior high or actually the slide deck will indicate, do we have the, the junior high first, Karen?
Yes.
All right. So Principal Miller can, can begin.
All right. Thank you. So one of the areas that we are working towards is implementing an academic advisory period. So our, our current, our current schedule on Mondays calls for students to meet with all seven of their class periods for 10 minutes with a five-minute break in between. This is something that we've heard a number of times through our various surveys from students and families as well as from, from staff themselves. They would like to change. We started this change out of the convening meeting that we had with SCO. And it's been an ongoing kind of conversation to evolve into what an academic advisory would look like. So we're, we're hoping to move forward with that, starting on the Monday we return from, from break. Go ahead, Karen. So what would be the components of an academic advisory? All students would be assigned with one teacher that they would meet with weekly. The primary, the primary function of this is an academic check-in. So you'd be looking, you know, the teacher would be assisting students and looking at their assignments, both current, if they had missing or, or, or late assignments to help them stay on track with their, with their distance learning. One of the things that we've heard time and time again, from students especially, but also from, from, from parents is that there just doesn't seem to be enough time in the day to get things done. And, you know, we hear of students staying up late to try to complete assignments. So one of the things that would be another key component would be that we would not be assigning any additional new assignments on Monday. So it would be a time for students to make sure that they could catch up. It, it would not be a graded course, so it does not require teachers to teach any new curriculum. However, most teachers have said they would like to do beyond an academic check-in and, you know, would like to address some of the other skills that they see students struggling with during distance learning, including organizational skills, other executive functioning skills. And also to be able to have a chance to do a social emotional check-in or to do some, some team building collaborative activities. And it would be a time where we could also kind of roll out some school-wide activities, spirit days, for example. So here is what the student schedule would look like. You can see our current schedule on the left hand of the screen that has, you know, students meeting all seven periods in a very compressed amount of time, along with time to work on their assignments and to check in with their teachers in the afternoon. That doesn't mean that students aren't necessarily assigned new things currently. So on Monday, students are sometimes assigned work to complete on Monday that is new to them. So that would be, that would be a change. In our proposed schedule, our academic advisor would meet from 8:30 to 9:30. And then students would have time to work on their assignments, take lunch. And then in the afternoon, be able to check in with teachers who would be available. For the, for the, for the staff side on that, 9:30 to 10:30 would be a, a time for stu, teachers to have further prep. And then our site meetings would occur between 10:30 and 12:15. So there are a few other things. Most teachers have agreed to accept all late work through the last week of the, of the semester with minimal or no penalty. The, the vast majority have said that they will not penalize students for late work, although some teachers will, will still impose a 10% penalty on late work. Again, as I've said a couple of times, no new work is assigned on Mondays. There were, there were a, a smaller but vocal number of, of parents who have requested to have a challenge and extension opportunities for students. And so Mondays could become an opportunity for that as well. And so Mondays could become an opportunity for that as well. We're going to be adding kind of a drop in academic counseling for students. We will also reach out and and request, you know, students to attend that as needed, but it's also a time for students to kind of drop in and just discuss what's going on and and kind of work through what their issues may be. We're planning to work in grade level teams and create some cross curricular interdisciplinary projects. So hopefully it would be something that would be tied into multiple courses. And then maybe not seem as as onerous to students since they'll be working on it for several different courses. And then we will continue and and expand upon our home visits, our parent communication and our outreach to to students.
Chris, can you tell us a little bit about what's been happening and what would be added or changed with that outreach, that proactive reaching out to students that are really struggling?
Sure. So we we look at our attendance weekly. So in terms of, you know, there's there's often a correlation between problems with attendance as well as problems in terms of achievement in in grades. So in terms of attendance, we analyze it every week, we call clear absences and and try to figure out what's going on with those students. Some of those students continue to have issues with attendance nearly every week. And in those cases, we have reached out to families. We've had some a number, quite a few home visits where we've tried to connect and see what the issues are for students being able to attend. So that that's sort of what we've done in terms of attendance. On the grading side, we have met and communicated with with every student and their family that has had a failing grade reported at any of our progress report periods. And we've been in in consistent conversations and communications with those families and with those students. It's something that primarily falls on the shoulders of our school counselor and myself. And so we've kind of divided the the students who are struggling academically between us. And like I said, we've been, we've been communicating with them, trying to get them to advocate for themselves as well, make sure that they're communicating, trying to get them to attend office hours. But sometimes, you know, we're sort of the liaison to them being able to do that. So I think those are the the big components of what we've been doing.
Chris, can you go ahead, Mike? Go ahead, Mike. You're muted, Mike. You're muted.
I'll be better that way. Monday morning, I'm a I'm a teacher. Will I have a list of my 20 whatever students of their assignments, how they're doing, how their grades are doing, what are they looking like? So I can look and I can say, hey, Chris, you're looking good. I like the way you're doing in math, blah, blah, blah. Or hey, I noticed you're missing a couple of assignments here. Let's get on it. Or I noticed you missed three days last week. You know, what's going on, blah, blah, blah. I don't know. I guess what I'm saying, will the teachers have that information Monday morning?
Yeah. So the students will be assigned in a in a section in our areas. And if they're assigned to a specific teacher, those teachers have access to be able to view their attendance, to be able to view where where they're doing in terms of their grade books. And a couple of things about the about the way that we would be scheduling kids. They would all be scheduled with their same grade level. And they would also be scheduled with teachers that they already currently have. We felt that that was an important piece because teachers meet in grade level teams from time to time. And, you know, knowing, you know, what some of the upcoming assignments would be would help facilitate that. You wouldn't have to establish a relationship or rapport with students as much. So it would, it would be efficacious for us to be able to have, you know, grade alike students that teachers already know. So that's another.
About how many students per advisory?
So we have it right now where the vast majority are 15 or below just because of the way that we, you know, unfortunately, they don't, you know, the the size of each grade level doesn't doesn't necessarily among staff. So I think the smallest advisory we have is like 11 students. And I think the largest is like 17. Coming in that range. So try to keep it around 15 and we capped it at no more than 20. But I think the largest one right now is scheduled at 17, if I'm not mistaken.
And so the expectation is the teachers could go into areas, look at this stuff as they're doing whatever else they're doing in advisory. Okay, great. That's good.
Yeah.
And I totally agree that even more than just that would be apropos.
Yep.
And I do want to point out, and Chris alluded to this in his presentation, this is still an item that we anticipate doing. We are negotiating it currently still to have some closure on it this week. So.
Great.
Well, the one thing that got me excited was the grade levels will work on creating cross culture, cross curricular interdisciplinary projects. Is that something that would be done school wide or some classes? How is that?
Being, yeah, that's a good question. So I am currently working with a couple of your former school colleagues, Sarah Lundie and Chuck Wade, who are helping us implement that. So I think, you know, it's it's such a large thing that we want to, we want to have it available to folks who are interested. But trying to get everyone involved within the school day would probably prove to be a little bit unsurmountable. So a lot of that work will happen with the willing and, you know, people who are interested in in doing this. And hopefully something that is a springboard right now, but will continue, you know, when we are able to return hopefully with students five days a week in the in the fall. So it's
Are you saying like teachers that are willing to do that?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was just trying to clarify. Do you mean like students are willing to do it? Or are you talking to staff?
I was going to say staff more. It's just the time that we have is limited. And so some of this work will will likely happen outside of what our current contract hours are. So we would have to have folks who are willing to to take that on. And and some folks, to be perfectly honest, would be great. And the timing might not be right for them, right? And so, and so we don't want to put an added burden on folks who are are maybe struggling just to kind of keep their heads above water right now with with personal and professional issues, really.
So do you have commitment from some? I wasn't sure if this is a brainstorm list or if these are things that are actually going to happen.
No, we do. We do have some and we will, they'll have to agree to a formal fellowship with with SCO is what we're what we're going to be offering.
Yeah, I know this is all being negotiated. I was just wondering if you already had people that were like excited to go.
We do. We do definitely have some folks who are gung ho and and the reason the reason this came up is when we had our professional development day in in November and we came back from the convening, the first convening, and we talked about what are some things that people would be interested in? We had our staff divided into breakout groups. I think there were something like six and at least four of them self-reported out that they were really interested in cross curricular interdisciplinary projects. So.
Super exciting.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
So again, just to clarify, all of these items are still being negotiated, correct? They're not in place.
The advisory schedule is being negotiated. The we didn't have, I I I won't say that we formally wrote down that students will have no penalty on late work. That was an agreement that departments had kind of reported out that they had met and agreed that they would not do that. Or like one department mentioned that they were not comfortable with no penalty. They were comfortable with a 10% penalty. And so those are, those are not things that are are being negotiated so so much. Those were, that was an agreement at the at the site level. But yes, the schedule change would definitely be a negotiated item.
Gotcha.
And yet has not been finalized.
Well, and I I echo Ariselli in in, I mean, there's, there's a lot in here to really like, and especially in light of you know, this sort of a crisis mode that we're in with the grades. I I think that the idea of some time and focus on the call it advisory, call it what you want, but on looking at how a student's doing and where they need help on a regular basis is incredibly valuable. And I would hope would we would see the results in better grades.
Right.
You know, I mean, that is the goal of all this, right, is to not is to find ways to support students to do better in this environment.
Absolutely. So it is certainly true that one of the, one of the hopes is that grades would improve. One of the things that I think is important to remember in this, in this, in this process, however, is that we have a lot of students who are are still able to maintain decent academics, but are still looking for connection. And
Oh, yes.
You know, we're, we're thinking of having this sort of consistent small group that meets for, you know, a meaningful amount of time could be another avenue for them to sort of create community. And again, having it grade specific, it will potentially allow some of those students who are being, who are having more success in this in this environment to collaborate with students who are in their advisory that are maybe struggling on some of the assignments. And since we are small enough where at least in the core academic subjects, every student has in sixth grade has the same core academic teachers as every other student in sixth grade and seventh grade and eighth grade. That we think that there's a, there's a lot of meat on the bone there for for students to be able to work with each other and support one another in this environment.
Great. Agreed.
This is a little irregular. We have a, because we have high school and junior high, we have a public comment that's junior high related. So I think it's most appropriate to do it now. And then if there's any more questions for Chris, we can continue and then we'll move over to the high school. Sorry, Bill. So I think it's, is it Mindy Kiff who has a comment?
Yes. Yes. Hi. Thanks for changing this format to let me ask my question or comment. So I like that this Monday schedule is being revisited because as a parent, this, the current Monday schedule of a 10 minute check in per class is really seems like a waste of time for everyone. So moving to a one hour block seems like a great idea. And it seems like a great way to support students that are in need. I do have a concern though, that the 15 to one ratio seems like a really big ratio for one hour for a teacher to effectively be able to reach out to each of those students individually to address their needs academically. And then at the same time, I wonder what that time will look like and how it will be used for those students that are current in their assignments and seem to be plugging away fine during this during this distance learning time. So I guess those are just some questions and comments that I would like to be taken into consideration as this is being formatted.
Thank you, Mindy.
Thank you, Mindy.
Thanks.
Any other questions or public comments?
I just want to go to point three, Chris, and that is the resources available to teachers and I'll stop there. But I think you all figured out that I'm very high on professional development. So again, I kind of go to what did the teachers need? And I know you all are talking about this, but I just want to reemphasize that you have my support about what do they need? How do we make the teachers better at this advisory, if that's the right word, and make them competent and to meet the needs of all the kids. Just want to make sure you know that.
Thank you.
All right. Can we move over to Principal Halliday at the high school?
Thank you, Chris.
Good evening, everybody. Trustee Lopez, Trustee McAllister, welcome to the team. I look forward to working together and getting to know you a little bit. Looking forward to the day that I can give you a tour around campus and we can talk about our programs, not through Zoom. I'm going to start by talk just a refresher about what we did as collaboratively to kind of close out our semester about what we chose to do to assist students in that final stretch to improve grades and performance. At the end of this first semester, we had two scheduled collaborative days for teachers to work on, to work collaboratively. We also used quite a bit of that time, frankly, to talk about the proposed schedules for the second semester. We gave students a break with no new content in all classes except for AP courses. We reached an agreement about accepting all late work up till December 11th for up to 100% credit and no less than 75. And then we reached agreement after that, that all seniors who have a D and F will receive a no mark and have until there's a, I gave Karen the wrong date, until February 1st, 21 to improve their grades. The reason we chose to do a new mark is, I mean, a note mark versus incomplete is a no mark doesn't have any penalty on their grade point average. So it doesn't affect their eligibility to play sports. If we're able to do that, it doesn't affect their transcripts if the university is asking for half your transcript. And it also obviously gives them time to work with their teachers and improve their improve their grade. And then the teacher can turn in a grade change form on February 1st. We will work with the counseling department and the teachers to make sure that students, seniors who received a no mark get consistent feedback about their progress and their status during this time period. So they know exactly where they are and exactly what they have to do. There'll be calls home, emails home to teachers, I mean, excuse me, to students and parents. And kind of constant communication from the team to make sure that seniors are fully aware of what they need to do to improve their grade. So.
A clarifying question, Bill?
Yeah.
So some just a little confused by how will they have an opportunity to improve their grades if we're not letting them do anything beyond 12 11 for late assignments?
No, the latest, that's for the first semester grades for for all students in all grade levels can turn in late work up to 12 11 and receive up to 100% credit. The no mark grade is just for seniors who received a D or an F in the first semester.
Yeah, I understand that. How are they supposed to improve their grade?
They can turn late work in.
So they will be allowed.
That's
Yeah, they'll be allowed to turn late work in, late projects in, do alternative assessments with
That there'll be some flexibility for seniors with Ds and Fs, is what you're saying.
It's really taken, taken the philosophy that it's much easier for a student who had a 40% to make up that extra, you know, 30% to get themselves to a C than it is to start over again to have to make up that class at a zero, right? And just they needed more time. So because of the pandemic, we're going to give them more time.
Can I ask a question? What, how was the decision made about the 75% versus 100% credit?
It was, it was basically a collaborative discussion that we had in our leadership team, which is the department chairs, and they got feedback from all their department members. This is not standard policy for high school teachers to accept late work until near the end of the semester and to give it up to 100% credit. But in these circumstances, we felt that it was important to give teachers and students the opportunity to recover. Some teachers, quite frankly, were a little less flexible than others. And they felt it was unfair to the students who had done the work promptly and on time. That other students were allowed to give makeup work. And so this was more of a compromise position between 75 and 100%. A majority of our teachers have chosen to give up, to give the 100% credit for late work.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Similar to what Principal Miller was talking about, we are looking at a proposed schedule change for the second semester. Similar to the junior high school, we have found that our Mondays Um, similar to the junior high school, we have found that our Mondays are not as effective as we'd hoped they'd be. As you know, we have a kind of a 10 minute check-in period and then the students are supposed to go, go off for 40, 40 minutes and get themselves busy and organized and work on their week's assignments. We found it's a very stop-start day and teachers have been using that time to add additional layers to their direct instruction through Zoom. And so some students, you know, get a 10 minute check-in while other students are getting a half an hour or 40 minute lesson. So there's some, I don't want to say inconsistency more than inequity issue at hand there. So we are wanting to change our schedule that we would have a Wednesday advisory check-in day for students in the morning and the remainder of the day would be used for, um, asynchronous work for students and our teachers to work collaboratively, do their, do their planning. And, you know, have our general meetings that we usually do on our Wednesdays also. All on the proposed schedule, all synchronistic time would be in the morning. On Mondays and Thursdays, you would go to your odd classes. Thank you. On Tuesdays and Fridays, you'd go to your evening classes. Um, you can see is the idea that there wouldn't be such a stop-start aspect to our day that students would have four lessons on two, on two days a week, three lessons on two days a week. The Wednesday is advisory check-in and sync time. And then the office hours, what we've done is we've organized it over on the column to the right. So each department has two separate office hours during the course of the week. So students can go to those office hours either, you know, by referral by the teacher or by self-referral to get extra support. And ideally with the schedule, students won't be in conflict if they need to go to their science teacher. That doesn't mean they can't get to their math teacher. Yeah, I'm sure there's questions about that proposed schedule. And again, I do have to mention that, you know, we're in the process of working with our teachers uh, union and negotiating this. And we've had good dialogue and I'm very positive about this and this, uh, the results of this. And it was well received by the faculty, um, in survey information, but it still does need to go to a vote. Any questions about the proposed schedule?
I just make a comment real quick, Bill. Um, I like the schedule. I like that you're going to class to class to class as opposed to a a class and then go study or whatever. I think it, you know, actually it's more like a high school day if that's at all possible. Where they're going to class and then later in the afternoon, it's basically, I'll call it homework time and called asynchronous time and office hours where they can get more individual help. So I like the schedule. Um, I also like the, uh, the advisory on Wednesday. I think that's in both cases, high school and junior high. I think it's a good plan.
Yeah. The difference between the, the high school check-in and the middle school check-in is we, we are not having that as an, an academic advisory. We're having that as a grade level advisory. Each will have 30, I think it'll be 34 staff members will be assigned advisory. The numbers of those check-in groups will be about 16 to 20. It's more of a attendance check and also, um, the, the students are going to be divided by grade level. And we'll have hopefully grade level teachers that know all the students and all, and each of their groups. Um, but it is not the academic or social and emotional advisory that you often see at a middle school. That said, we've talked quite a bit with our leadership team and our counseling department about bringing in advisory program. It would include social, emotional learning aspects and academic support aspects in the, in the year to come. And we do think, and I will be pushing for the view of that because I think that our students, when we come back to in-person learning will not just have academic need and learning loss need. I think our students will come back with a great amount of emotional and isolation um, induced emotional need. And it would be nice if we had an advisory program to support them as they come back to our school in the, in the fall of 21.
And again, I restate my, um, what's the word? And my propensity for professional development to, again, some teachers are really good at this. Some teachers are not as good. Um, so whatever resources we need to bring to our staff to, to help them meet the needs of our kids, uh, know that you have my support 100%.
Yeah, yeah.
Bill, I have a question. So for the proposed schedule, would teachers be allowed to have synchronous and asynchronous time within their um, period? So I'm looking at the schedule, their 50 minute classes. Are students required to attend, you know, four in one day for a synchronous classes of 50 minutes? Or, um, all that depend on, on their teachers?
The 15 minutes, great question. The 15 minutes are designed to be synchronistic time, but the teacher does have flexibility to what they would do with that time. If they want to send the kids to a breakout group, if they want to work with a smaller group and send the students off, the teachers absolutely do have that flexibility.
I have another question. Time is reserved for later. So you have later in the day is the dedicated async time. So, yeah.
And, and honestly, Crystal or Trustee Lopez, excuse me. Our teachers are finding that the way that our asynchronous time is set up right now, the stop-start nature of it is not as effective as we've, we'd hoped, which is one of the big reasons why we want this change. Again, get your instruction in the morning, get your work, you know, get your work done in the afternoon. There's a, there's clear separation between the two. And Chris, you were sharing something?
No, it's okay. Uh, Ariselli, I think had a comment.
I, I just had a question about how is this going to be monitored? Like if this does in fact get put into play, how will we measure the effectiveness of it? Because the, the reason we're doing this, we're even looking at this change is because of the concern of how many students were struggling academically. So I just want to make sure that we're, whatever we put in place for second semester, that it's making a difference and that our results are demonstrating that what we put in place is working for our students.
Yeah, well, we will have to monitor the grade reports very, very closely. We monitor attendance on a daily basis. We look at our how attendance is coded. We can see the level of students that are engaged in synchronous time and asynchronous time. We'll be looking at all those metrics to see if this is, this is effective. The, you know, there's two, there's two big issues for us. One is student grade performance has gone down. And the second part is students feel not as connected to the school as we'd hoped they'd be, which is only natural. The second metric is harder to gauge. The first metric is a little easier for us and that's grade improvement and attendance.
And, and I will also add, you know, Principal Holiday sent out a survey to students, um, just, was it last week or the week before about, um, schedule desires and how they're doing? Um, and so we've, we have learned through all of this that student voice is powerful and poignant and needs to be visited and, and listened to. And so we will, you know, I will definitely be, I'm sure he'd do it anyway, but I, I'll be encouraging him to do the same thing as we get into this and they try it out and how are kids doing? And I would add, there's a third concern and that's just anxiety. Kids, I guess it's part of not being connected, but even the kids who are getting straight A's, you know, and, and listening to them, they're, nobody seems to be in a good place. Right? They all are feeling that separation and the stress that all of us feel in a pandemic. And again, kids encounter it in a dramatically different way than an adult does, I think. So, um, we want to do everything we can to alleviate that stress and anxiety that they have as much.
And if I may, I know, you know, we're running long and it's a, it's a long board meeting, but I want to add to that if I may, Chris, is that when we were having our discussions as a faculty about what we should do with our schedule and our changes. Um, I was extremely proud of the faculty and pleased about how much they went back to student survey data. And they kept, kept on saying, many of our department chairs in particular, kept on saying, well, what did the students tell us? You know, are we making a decision because this works for us as teachers or make a decision based on student voices? And having that survey data, I mean, we've surveyed our students four separate times this year about a variety of questions. And then teachers have done individual surveys with their cohorts. Um, having that data was instrumental in this process and it is, is very grounding for us. And I think, you know, if you look at silver linings to this tough situation, there's one of them there is that we realize that student voices are really a data point for us to make plans on.
Along those lines, or, or I'm sorry, you're still going. I'll, I'll do this at the end. Continue, please. Sorry.
Okay.
Um, can I just, um, comment that I, I was about to ask about what your sense was from the students about what schedule worked best for them? And I appreciate the background on, you know, what went into thinking about it. And I guess I'm wondering how, how much does this new schedule reflect what you heard from the students? Or was it just one of the components? Like, do you think they'll see the new schedule and say, well, that works a lot better for me? Or maybe that's.
We, the last survey we did, we had about 300 of our 539 students complete the survey. And one of the questions was simply, would it be beneficial to your studies if we had synchronous time in the morning and async in the afternoon? And about 70% of the students said that would be preferred.
Okay.
And again, that was a big point in the discussion. You know, that is hard to argue with those kind of figures.
Thank you.
Chris and Erin, if you want to chime in on this as I'm going through this, because this is, we discussed this today, Chris and Erin and the counselors and myself is that we will have to have some individual graduation plans for the senior class of 2021. We have, um, a very rigorous graduation requirement as a district and we've ramped it up over the course of the years. And this pandemic has overmatched some of our seniors and their ability to pass all of their classes. And so we have some individual students that were online to gra- many individual students are online to graduate without many hiccups. But right now are in jeopardy based on their current grades that are graduating. So we will be, after the semester, uh, Ms. Mason, Mr. Flores will be collecting all the information, all the data on those seniors who have, uh, failing grades at the end of the semester. And we will be meeting in January again to talk about what individual plans those students need to, um, to work towards graduation. And we will be coming to the board with requests for waivers on individual, on an individual basis.
And the intent is that next month, we will bring you a process for you to, um, take action on and approve. And then in the next few months after that, that we would bring the individual waivers to you. Um, again, the intent is that they'd meet all the minimum California graduation requirements, but, um, it's, it's a lot to ask kids to do credit makeup online when they're already overwhelmed by the online school that we're doing. So, you know, and, and at the end there, it just is, this is about the pandemic. It's not about students not achieving. It's about how everybody has been adversely affected by COVID and the stress and anxiety that the kids, especially the seniors who've lived through all those fires and the trauma, um, of that, how they've been affected. And so we really want to do everything we can within our power to make them successful and not have their life trajectory dramatically changed because of COVID. So, I know this is an action item that Santa Rosa City Schools is working on. Um, they're going to actually do a more blanket approach and just adopt the minimum graduation requirements for the state, for everybody, I think, in their senior class. Um, Winter is also working on a similar one. So we will be in, in good company, um, as we proceed down this route.
I just want to say really quickly that this is one of the things that makes Hillsburg a beautiful place to have a child go to school and that we have robust programs. We're about as close to A to G as you can get. Um, and you know, you're seeing in our A to G, um, readiness data, um, that I think you got a snapshot of recently. Um, but it's also, we, we've got about 120 seniors in our class right now, 120, 130, if you include the MBA kids. And we're going to go kid by kid and make decisions, student by student, about where they're at and what they need. No other school in necessarily is going to have the rigor and the programs that we have and allow for some flexibility given that we're in a, in a global pandemic. So, um, I feel really proud that we're going to be able to serve our kids and both help that, you know, keep the rigor that we know we want and make sure that every kid, um, can make an application to a four-year university if that's in the cards. But also understand that we don't want to ruin kids' lives right now because they've been dealt a really crappy card with all the tragedies that we've had, particularly with this senior class, right? These are the kids that had the Kincaid fire as freshmen. They had a flood down Main Street where their Safeway was closed. They had another fire, uh, brush us and then fire in their own community here as seniors along with a pandemic. Um, these kids have been through a lot and we're going to, we're going to handle every single kid on an individual basis and come to you with a, with a complete list of, of where every kid's at, what they need and what we're going to do to help them out.
That's great. Well put. Um, so I don't want to put you on the spot Vikram, but as the student trustee, who's a senior in the high school, I would love to get your thoughts on what's being proposed.
Um, I mean.
Not to put you on the spot.
Sorry, um, I had to leave for a few minutes. One of my dogs were going a little crazy. So I did miss part of it unfortunately, which I'm sorry about. But I, I mean, I have no objection, objections to it. Um, I think it's a good plan. I think helping seniors who, as you said, been through the fires and COVID now, and now have like very little motivation and kind of hope left about having a normal year and just not feeling like their life is in danger is making them, it's making grades drop. So I think in any way we can help, I think it's a good idea to try to help. Yeah, um, I don't know.
I did, and I, yeah, totally. And I did not see you step away, but did you see the proposed schedule?
Yes. So it was Monday and Thursday were, um, odd classes, Tuesday and Fridays were even classes and Wednesdays were check-ins, correct?
Yeah. And the async time is now not right after classes in the afternoon. So you go to class.
Oh, right, right, right.
Yeah. What do you think of that? Is that, you think that's?
I mean, yeah, that, I, that sounds a little bit better because it kind of spaces out your classes more and gives you more time to get assignments done for that class. Um, how long is the check-in going to be? I probably missed that, but.
It's like a half.
It's going to be 20, 15, 20 minutes, Vikram.
Okay. Then, yeah, I think that's a good idea. I think if the check-in was too long, it would be a little bit difficult for kids to stay focused. But I think, I think, yeah, that's a good idea.
Thank you. We appreciate your input.
Thanks, Vikram.
And I think you put it well. I mean, my, like, speaking for my kid and kids that I've encountered this, it is like a hopelessness, right? Like you just feel defeated. Um, and especially with us moving into second semester and distance learning. It, it feels like a loss for all of us, but I know particularly for the seniors and pass on, you know, like I am bound to and determined to get kids back on campus somehow, especially the seniors, like even if it's the last week of school and we can do it safely, we're going to bring you back. So we will do everything we can to do that. And I appreciate your, your being here, Vik, and taking care of your dogs. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Holiday. Righty. Any other questions? High school?
And there, there are, there, we do not have any public comment on this section.
Yeah, I, I, I just really appreciate both Chris and Bill representing the schools and that the teachers, the staff have really taken this on with a sense of urgency. And, you know, are in the middle of making changes that we'll see in January, which is all we can ask. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I, I agree with, I agree with Donna completely. And I think the, just the, I can just tell all the thought and care that's gone into modifying this schedule and modifying these guidelines so that it works for your students. And I just think that's awesome. So.
Yeah, it, it has been a heavy lift for teachers. I mean, it is, it is a tough, tough situation they find themselves working in. And this is extra, right? This is more on top of the daily teaching that we've asked them to engage in and they've done so willingly and with, you know, compassion for their, for their students. So we're, we're grateful for that.
Very much so.
I mean, I think there's so much involved in this that's practical too, for both the students and the teachers, like everyone adjusting to being in your home environment all the time or being in your classroom with no students and having to adjust your teaching style and for all the students to really have to have organization skills that they never needed in the past in the same way and to manage their time and all of their responsibilities. Because many of them have responsibilities with younger siblings and other home responsibilities. All these things play into an ability to excel and to have a great year as much as, as possible. And so the discussions about changing the graduation guidelines and about having, you know, the school schedule be sensitive to those, to what works best in that, those contexts, I just think is really important. And I, I commend you guys for addressing it the way you are in the middle of everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I echo that too. Um, I think that.
I echo that too. I think that the advisory period on Wednesdays is help for students, I think, just like with social emotional trauma that they've experienced, you know. I would like, and I know Vikram said he likes a twenty minutes, but a thirty minute takes like five, just from experience, takes like five to seven minutes to get everyone on Zoom and, you know, unmuted and connecting to, to audio. Maybe that's something that teachers can do just independently. But just having like that personal connection with students, like how was your weekend? How are you feeling? You know, just like having those conversations that you would have with your teachers, maybe like as you're walking in the door, like in, you know, when you were at school or as you're leaving class, like I remember like my, some of my teachers like putting music at the beginning and they would discuss the music, you know, or just like talking about just a spirit day that was going on. So just having like those, those like everyday conversations and, and, you know, putting this time aside to have those conversations with students and socializing, like I'm thinking of those freshmen who are new to our district, who don't, who haven't, you know, socialized with anyone outside of Zoom. So I think it's really important to have that aspect and both in middle school and at the high school. So yes, we have that academic aspect in middle school, but I think we should also have that social emotional aspect, just checking in, like, how are you feeling today? How was your weekend?
Great.
Thank you.
Point. And happy birthday, Bill.
Yeah, happy birthday, Bill.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
It's a, it's a little bit of a marker today. Yep. My movie tickets just got cheaper.
Yeah, and you could be the only one in the movie theater. That's pretty cool.
All right, well, moving along, thank you to my Bill and Chris. Really appreciate you guys leading that important work and to all the teachers that are just rolling up their sleeves and taking on yet another challenge of seeing how we can improve the learning situation for our students. So hats off to all of you. Thank you.
I want to gently point out, we're at eight o'clock.
Yeah.
And we need to get, we have to vote to go past nine and we can only do it twice. We want, like, the next, the next one is an unbelievable story and great testimony to the work that's been done at Marcy. So we want to give them their due time. But we just, we're going to need to keep ourselves moving along. So not judging.
No more questions or comments.
Well, you're welcome.
I'm kidding. All right. All right, Bill, is that you again?
That's me again. And our day started with a reminder that we're, we're not done with two thousand and twenty just yet. I've been working with Tor and Josh and Andrea, one of our Marcy Visser students, who's just been a superstar this year. And she woke up this morning feeling a little under the weather and she has a complete case of laryngitis and was unable to, and she was going to be our featured presenter tonight. And so we, because Andrea is not the only superstar in the program and the growth of this program is so remarkable, we reached out to another one of our young women in the program, Maria, and asked her today if she'd be willing to join us and do her presentation. And she had just done her demonstration and there was tears in the house and everybody was inspired by her story and what she'd shared. And her confidence is unbelievable. And she said, sure. And so Tor and Josh and Maria and I met at five o'clock tonight to talk about presenting. And so what we're going to, what we're going to do is I'm going to hand off to Tor and he's going to talk a little bit about, remind everybody a little bit of the, the scope of what big picture is. And obviously, board members have visited big picture schools, so you have a familiarity with it. But he'll talk a little bit about the progress and what we've accomplished so far this year. Josh will join him in that also. And then we're going to hand off to Maria and she's going to talk a little bit about her exhibit today and talk about her learning and her personal interest project. And then we'd like to conclude with a letter that was sent to us today by our advisor, Lauren, who works with us from the big picture organization. And I think it encapsulates very nicely how proud we are of our progress in such a short period of time. We'll try to keep it to ten or twelve minutes as best as we can. And we do want to have an opportunity for you to ask questions of Maria at the end of the presentation too. Okay. So I'd like to introduce Tor Top, who, remember, came all the way from Haley, Idaho with years of experience in big picture schools. And has done a remarkable job. We're really happy to have him. And you see Josh is with us, who's both a PE superstar and joined us in alternative education for his first shot at, at working in these type of programs. And he's been a great fit too.
Hello, everyone. First, thanks for having us. It's been, it's been, it's been amazing. It's been a great start to the year. First things first, thanks to the board, admin, the structures of support that are in place and have been put in place have just really been helpful to Josh and I. So it makes a huge difference when it's top down and everybody's on board rowing the boat in the same direction. Students here are amazing. And hearing all of you talk about what the seniors have gone through, I was going to bring the fact that the, the most common denominator among these students is they're really in service to others when they're at their best. Like, it's amazing. Josh and I, every day, are touched by how in tune the kids are with their community. And I think it's, in hearing this, kind of a natural evolution of their experiences. They've been through so many experiences in their community, involving their community, that I think it's secondhand. And it's really exciting to think about in the future how much that's going to continue to grow. When we think about big picture, it's one student at a time. And so if we look at the three distinguishers, we're talking about learning plans and the advisory structure and exhibitions. And Josh and I successfully, with some great work by students, have been able to have every student write an individual learning plan. And we're connecting the vision five years from now with the goals for this year and what the names of those projects look like. And we've met them where we're at. The learning plans aren't complete. When we have a student who's dreamy in their vision and what they want to do in five years, we dive in and we talk about that. And when we have a student that has a project that they need to do in the next week, like start a YouTube channel, we just dive into that. And that's going to reveal that vision later. So learning plans are great. They're a real lens to do one student at a time. I'll let Josh chime in whenever he wants, but I think for me, the, the greatest thing about the experience so far is the community we've been able to build in our advisory. The, the trust and the safe space to come in and just talk about not algebra two and not biology, but is your family safe? Do you have enough food? How are you dealing with COVID? What's going on? What can we do to help? And so there's just been a great energy created there. And we just completed exhibitions, which are the greatest authentic assessments ever. Students exhibit their learning. Maria passed the test because the litmus test in an exhibition is, did we make someone cry because of their greatness? And we did to about a sixty percent effectiveness in these exhibitions. Mostly, thank you, Connie Marks. And so, yeah, that's, that, that's an update. We couldn't be happier. There's some great things coming with Acosta. We've been able to bring in some Native American leaders from the community to do some work with the kids. We've had professional mentors come in and I'll step aside for a minute. Josh, get ready. You're going to talk for a minute. I'm going to throw you under the bus and give you the floor and then I'll let you introduce Maria.
Perfect. Well, so this summer I was approached about alternative high school MBA and I was brand new to it as well as big picture. Last year with my experience, I substitute in there a couple of times. And to say I wasn't excited, I wasn't, I was looking forward to the challenge, but I wasn't sure exactly what to expect. Then I got introduced to big picture, met Tor. We spent the summer planning our program. And then we got into the school year. And not only have these students just blown me away, I probably had the best day I have had as a teacher, as my short tenure as a teacher today, when Maria presented. I had a walk with Bill and it was something that I was just so blown away by because I think a lot of people have their preconceived notions about what MBA was, and I definitely had those. And then to get in there this year and to see what the students are bringing to the table, how they're engaging with us, I couldn't ask to be in a better situation with these students and they're just so remarkable. And Maria is a leader among the students. They look to her. And when we asked her today, on a short notice, she was ready to go. And without further ado, let's, Maria, everyone.
Hello, I'm Maria, seventeen, and I'm in the Marcy Visser Academy in Hillsburg. And I don't know what else much to say. Well, it is my second year in being in the Marcy Visser. So I was in it last year, my junior year. And it's really different compared to last year. Last year had had, it had lots of downs and a couple of ups, but this year has been really good. I'm surprised I'm even in, like, I'm here since I'm like, usually like really quiet and stuff. And for some reason, this year I just, just went off, I guess. And here I am. So it's, it's changed a lot and it's changed me a lot in a lot of ways. Cause like I said, I wouldn't expect me being here. And so thank you for having me. And there's, there's just so much to say about it, so much to say about, about this program and all the different experiences that I've had with each student who on the sideline, even though we're all so quiet. There, they have a lot to say. And I didn't really end up picking type of, type of path I wanted to choose as anything, like as a career or anything. So I kind of just involved myself with anything that the program had to offer and just sort of see where I landed. I, 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 I was in the ZOTs. The ZOT meetings were one of my favorites and I, they're still my favorite since, since COVID happened and we're all online. It's been really hard to talk to new people and talk to even students I go to school with unless I have classes with them, which is not that many. So the ZOT is a really good experience, at least for me, that it get me, it got me out of my comfort zone and actually turning on my camera and talking to whoever now, just because everyone there is just so accepting. And it was just a good opportunity for me to just let people see a side of me that I don't usually let them see and just sort of grow out of my comfort zone. And it's just really, I don't know, it's emotional just because I didn't, I didn't think I would get that opportunity. And it's, I'm sorry, it's just really emotional, but it's been really fun. So they're happy tears. And so in my Marcy Visser, sorry. In my Marcy Visser, I ended up at least trying to go looking for art and cooking. And luckily I got my CTE in culinary. So I got culinary classes. So that helped with me trying to see my options in the world of culinary. And I already drew, I already drew a lot around my house. I love painting. I like sketching. I like doing whatever honestly that involves art. And and I never really thought about college until this year, surprisingly. I don't know, college was never really like a thing I wanted to go to. So this was like something that actually made me think about it. And turns out that I don't really want to be in an artist or a cook. I want to be like a therapist or something, something with psychology, which I think is really cool. So it's, it's been interesting. Online learning has been really difficult. And and I know some, some of my friends have had struggles too. So I think really thinking about students is a, is a good feeling for me, at least. Since I feel like many students don't think that teachers think about them like that or care for them and just think it's all about grades. So I think that if students knew how much teachers and other people like care, knew they cared about them, they would take school way more serious, which is why I get emotional. So sorry for crying because I'm a big crybaby. But it's really, it's really cool to be in a place like this to let people know, like, at least points of view, at least my point of view of online learning and like, like hearing, like other people's point of views, just so I get more views about everything. And I'm just excited to see what happens in the next semester, since first semester wasn't that bad, even though even though grades are bad, you know, I know some students are doing something fun. Otherwise, what else would they be doing?
So Maria, I was going to jump in for a quick second and share with the board and our members of the meeting that Maria is one of the students in, in MBA that has said it's okay for us to share their presentations with you. And so if you would like, we would, we're going to send the slide decks and we recorded their, their demonstrations on Zoom and we can share those with you. And that includes not just their individual learning plan, but what they've reflected upon. And in Maria's case was very deep reflection about her skill set and her creativity and her personal inventory work that she did to identify those strengths and different pathways. And also the Zooms include a lot of question and answers from, from Tor and from Josh and from Connie and from fellow classmates. So I really encourage the board to take the opportunity, take a look at those because it's, it's, it's very powerful. We've even had a couple of students, one student in particular, who did two demonstrations. She did one fully in Spanish and one fully in English. And the students were able to earn their Spanish press credit if they were able to respond and ask questions in Spanish, which was fantastic too.
Rick, can I ask you one question? You, you mentioned that, and I promise, we won't ask a lot of questions, but I just have one question. You, you mentioned that it's really different this year compared to last year. What is the biggest difference?
Well, besides it being behind a screen, it's been really like difficult to stay on task, at least for me, it is. I still try to keep up with my work, but having like a home setting and then like, you know, having to do school at home where you're usually comfortable with, you know, you're usually in your comfort zone around the house. So it's harder to like get in the mindset of like, okay, I need to work on stuff and I need to do things, you know? Usually I just end up slacking off because like, I just feel so comfortable in my house. I don't get in the mentality of I gotta do schoolwork. So I think that's like a big difference for me at least.
I got the impression that you were saying that it was better this year than last year for you? How is it better?
Um, at least for me, it is the, I think the best thing is probably being able to still do things like hobbies and stuff, I guess. Like I get more time to to do like drawing, like I like to draw, I get more time to do that at home since everything I need is already home. So it's easier for me to access stuff to do things instead of being at school and just, just worrying about work or like, if I have nothing to do, I'll just go do homework all the time, you know?
Thank you.
Tor and Josh, have anything you'd like to add?
Maria, I'm super appreciative of your courage, your authenticity and your transparency. You did a great job today and you did a great job this evening. And just for reference for folks, Azot is something from the Big Picture Network called Zooming Opportunities Together. And my colleague in Ukiah Freddie started an international Zoom. So Maria shows up every Thursday to a Zoom. And I think at the height, we had sixty people, forty-five students, fifteen adults from five countries, seven states. And students just answer pick-me-ups and breakout rooms and just get to know each other. And we're trying to evolve it into interest-based zooming opportunities. So from that, actually, our students expressed an interest in cosmetology. And if you can believe this, looking like this, I'm going to host a cosmetology Zoom on a weekly basis in two thousand and twenty-one and offer hairstyling tips called Hair Don't, not Hair Do, Hair Don't. That said, we're proud of Maria and we're exceptionally pleased with the way it's gone. And we'd be happy to share all sorts of resources with any of you that would like to see what's going on a little more in depth.
Yeah, I want to think, I know we don't have a lot of time, but I just want to thank Maria for sharing her experience. I think it takes a lot of courage to do that. And I want to highlight a couple of things that she mentioned and correct me if I'm wrong, but she, you know, she mentioned a safe space. And she mentioned identity. And I think. And she mentioned identity. And I think it, I think this is a message for all of our faculty here and, you know, across the states that having a safe space and feeling like you're able to identify with someone, maybe it's a peer, maybe it's a teacher in your classroom, can take a student like a long way, you know, and she shifted her mentality, like she's thinking about college now. And I think that has to do a lot with the safe space and the conversations that are happening in the classroom. So thank you to Thor and thank you to Josh for those. And thank you, Maria, for your courage.
Yeah, it is very apparent, the community that all three of you have created at Marcy and all the kids, you know, I mean, all the students have been co-creators of that. And Thor, I haven't even got to meet you in person yet and shake your hand. And that'll happen eventually. I've been in your classroom a gazillion times already, but
Looking forward to it.
Yeah, really happy to have you on board. And Josh, awesome to have you in this capacity. I know, I know you probably took it with a little trepidation, but you guys are doing outstanding work. And Maria, thank you so much. I echo everything Crystal said. It took a lot of courage and I'm so proud of you. So. And we do care about all of you. So make sure the kids hear that and they can always come to a board meeting and hear us talk about them. So.
Yeah.
This is Erin. I, I just quickly want to thank Maria for sharing her story with us and you know, on short notice, and there's some, some really great stuff that they're going to send along that kind of speaks to the work that she's been doing, the heavy, heavy lifting. And Tor and Josh, this was, you know, a hope in a dream six months ago. And you have made those hopes and dreams be starting to realized. And the hard work in the heart that you're putting into this is exactly what these kids in our community needed. You're making good on what was a promise six months ago. And I just, I thank you for that. And Bill alluded, we got some really cool feedback from Lauren, our, our coach, who's been with us for the last two years. Any of the board members have met Lauren. He led some of the tours that you all went on. And I, I can't thank you enough for, you know, it's one thing for Bill and I to like dream and hope and like go see other schools and but you guys are doing the lift. You're doing the work with our kids. So thank you.
And if I could conclude, Erin, by just indulging me for one more minute, I'd like to read what Lauren sent us today. And again, Lauren is our, our advisor for our school. Thor and, and Tor and Josh are the advisors for the students. Lauren is our advisor as we move forward and he's worked in big picture learning schools for over twenty years and was a founding principal at two different middle schools and high schools that use this model. And he wrote us today after watching some exhibits. I've now sat in four exhibits hosted by Marcy Basera students and feel compelled to thank you for your work. As I'm sure you're aware, there's something happening that would be easy to call magical. Calling it magical, however, would discount the hard work each of you has put into support this journey of the young people in your community. I saw an abundance of evidence demonstrating how students like Maddie, Bry, Maria, Matthew are developed as, developing as global citizens, independent learners and authors of their own stories. Students shared how they are working with mentors outside of school, how they find themselves reading and writing on their own, how their work has real meaning, how they are making international connections with other students and how they are now see themselves as college material. I saw evidence of academic rigor, social, emotional growth and students engaging in work that matters. I also saw students that know they are cared about by their advisors and their school. I have worked with a lot of big picture schools in the past twenty years and I'm shocked at how quickly this is happening at Marcy Basera Academy. It's mind boggling to think it's happening with a new advisor in this time of uncertainty. It wouldn't happen without the support and dedication you are all giving these young people. Thank you for letting me come alongside on this journey.
Bravo.
Yeah. Bravo to the, these two teachers, bravo to the twenty plus students in that program. And thanks again to the board and the entire district for supporting this project. This has been a shining light in the midst of this challenging year. Thank you.
Thank you. You accomplished.
Bill, if I may add, thank you to you and Erin for the dream. I appreciate it. This is the result.
Thank you, Maria.
Thank you for having me.
Anytime.
Thank you for being you.
All right. Thank you. So we're moving on to E, Youth Truth Survey Results.
That's me.
Hi, Diane.
Hi. Welcome aboard, trustee Lopez and trustee McAllister. Okay, so I know that I have to make a twenty-five page slide deck go pretty quickly here. So I think as we move through it, I'm going to let you guys almost read the individual slides on your own and give you some context and background to how the data is being used and collected. And please stop me as I put my auctioneer voice on and, you know, zip through it like Mike McGuire. Okay, so moving on to the next slide. These are the survey areas based on the different age groups, as you can see. And the only thing I want to point out on this is that we have the opportunity to identify sort of what kind of school we are. And then they ask questions based on subcategories for this. And so that's where this would be important. And we have identified, you know, that in some areas that we are, you know, a project-based learning school, for instance. And so some of our questions might be around that. Next slide, please. So while you guys are taking a moment, I don't know how much time you've spent in pre sort of reviewing these things. But while you're taking a moment with this, I want to point out that all of the, the data slides look like this. So it's meant to be a template, you know, kind of for the remaining slides that come along. The important thing to know is the big orange one at the top is, excuse me, I'm losing my voice too. Is the current results. And then our school and then the little black bar in the middle is how we rank compared to whatever cohort I choose. So if I chose Sonoma County or if I chose the state of California, or if I chose all youth true schools, that would be reflected in that black bar. And then the bottom slides are how the individual school ranks. So each one of the schools has an executive summary and it'll go over, and I think I'll probably spend the most time kind of on this. You know, it shows their highest rated themes, their lowest rated themes, their highest rated questions, lowest rated questions. And what I want to point out, and this is really important to understand, is that we surveyed students in April. And when we are comparing ourselves to youth true schools across California, they surveyed in January. So pre-pandemic, post-pandemic. And when I was reviewing the data with youth truths, especially in our areas of academic rigor, you know, that could be one reason why that we scored a little bit lower than we would like in that particular subcategory of academic rigor is, she said, you kind of have to look at it like those were the before schools. You and your Sonoma County schools are the after schools. So I'm just want to point that out. That being said, we didn't score poorly, you know, across the board. So let's move on to the next slide. So this is a summary. On this slide, I must point out that I chose the wrong cohort. So the Sonoma schools is the cohort I chose to compare it against. And there's a problem with that because I've compared all of the other measures to California schools as a whole. And the Sonoma cohort, cohort this spring was very small. So in fact, we're comparing ourselves to only one additional elementary school in Sonoma County on this slide. Next year, there are many more people who have jumped on board. So I feel like we're going to have a really good data set. I kind of want you guys to take this, all of this data as sort of a baseline. And we're surveying again in January and then we'll have really good data because we'll be able to compare. And we'll be able to compare the same questions with like cohorts. So that is how Fitch ranked. Those percentiles are correct. It's just the measure for Sonoma County schools is not an accurate measurement because it's just one additional school. So you can see eighty-sixth percentile is great. You know, ninety-seventh percentile is great, fifty-ninth, not so great, but we've got some, some explanation for that. Move on, sorry. I'm so used to controlling the engagement. They scored really high in engagement and another thing to point out that's different from elementary is that elementary cohorts, I can only sort by grade because this year I didn't have the option or they didn't ask students the question of how they identified in terms of ethnicity. And so you'll see in secondary, maybe because they believe that secondary students can self-identify and elementary can't, I'm not sure. But next year we will have the ability to sort the data and see how some of our different ethnic groups report out on these questions. But this time, all we could sort by or all we could pull out in terms of cohorts was the grade levels. So that's engagement. That's academic rigor. You can move on to the next one. Relationships, they scored well in relationships. Culture. Culture was one of their lower areas, but again, I would say, you know, overall, they scored really well, eighty-sixth percentile. And then moving on, instructional methods, also a nice score. So junior high, this is their average rating. So the scale changes. It's now a one to five scale. So we're looking, you just want to take note of that. It's no longer, you know, one to three scale like the elementary. So those are the different areas. And on this one, the measurement is correct as compared to California schools, not just Sonoma County schools. And so we can move along. Those are, that's the executive summary, the highest rated themes. Students reported that like I was reading some of the answers and they really felt like relationships and belonging and peer collaboration were one of their strongest, strongest areas. Whereas academic rigor and engagement were some of the lower areas, areas we need work on. I should say the junior high had an extraordinary turnout. They had like a really high percentage of the parents surveyed. They had great turnout in terms of student surveys. So I was really happy about that. Next slide. So here's where we can start to see the breakdown between, you know, our two primary ethnic groups are white and how they refer to Hispanic Latinx or Spanish origin. So you can see how students who identify themselves as that particular ethnicity rank compared to, you know, white students or multiracial. So just pointing that out again with academic rigor. Academic rigor for our Latinx population seems like they believe that there's enough rigor. Go on. Relationships. Belonging and peer collaborations, one of their stronger areas. And then culture. So that's a repeat, then the high school and how they're ranking again. Oh, that's, the high school actually, that's a little bit better. I'm sorry, I didn't see that that's not also compared to California schools. So number schools, there's about five different high schools in this cohort. So that's decent. It's not compared to the one, you know, like as in the junior high. So I think Amalino participated, a couple of schools in Santa Rosa participated. And next year we'll have a many more. Some of them dropped out this year just because of the, you know, the switch to distance learning. So move along. Culture. Thank you. Yeah. Highest rated themes, belonging and peer collaboration, just like the junior high and college and career readiness. Again, we see academic rigor being an area that needs improvement and relationships. So we asked some questions also, excuse me, about STEM school safety and emotional and mental health. So you can kind of take a look at those questions and how students reported those at the bottom there. I'm sorry, move on. I'm trying to move fast. Engagement. You can take a look at that one. Academic rigor, we all scored, you know, roughly within the same area. I like to see that there's not a huge disparity between how ethnic groups report. Relationships. Belonging peer collaborations. And then culture. Solidly in the middle. Okay, next slide, sorry. This is just what we're doing in next steps. So we will give another survey in January. It will close at the end of January and it will again go out to parents, staff and students. And then we'll have the survey data again in February. So it's a really quick turnaround. And then we'll meet as the Sonoma County cohort to talk about this data amongst ourselves, any aha moments, any areas that we have in common with other high schools, with other junior highs, with other elementary schools. And then we start brainstorming about some things we might try. And yeah, I look forward to, I look forward to having that comparative data. And I mean, even though I'm sad that we're actually still going to be in distance learning, it'll be a nice distance learning measurement and another distance learning measurement. See if we see some improvement. Okay, I whipped through those slides quick style. So I am sure that you guys have questions and I'm certainly available. You know, offline as well to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Diane. I have a question. I, I wondered if, if we were to sort of, is, is there anything else that you can say about the, about the way that academic rigor is presented here, other than the fact that, that the timing of it was obviously poor because we were sort of just beginning distance learning. Because I, I get the sense that many of the students would have answered based on their previous experience and not, you know, we, we had only been in distance learning for a month at that point, and it was a strange moment of whiplash. But you know, I, I feel like there's a deeper question to ask about why the students have that to say about academic rigor across, you know, across the board.
Yeah, I, I couldn't agree more. And I, I got to tell you, Rose, I, I poked around a little bit at some of the questions that make up academic rigor. And I'm surprised overall that our scores are low. And it, and I think that I need a little more analysis from the youth truth folks because most of our students, if you look at their actual responses, respond that they do believe that their work is rigorous and they do believe it's meaningful. And I think there was quite a few students, maybe because we were in packet kind of work at the time, I, I don't know, who felt like homework was not important to them and homework had no meaning. So I don't know if they were viewing that packet work as sort of homework, but I wish I had a better answer for you. I, I don't, we were surprised and we were definitely surprised by the grade band that reported especially low on that. So.
I think it'll be an interesting and informative exercise to analyze the new data and compare it to the old once we get it in February, just to, to see, you know, where kids are and then moving forward. But it is hard to separate from the distance learning issue. So.
Yeah. And, but I think in this case, you know, the new data is going to reflect kind of what everyone's been through since the pandemic started, which is, which is such an aberration compared to the rest of their education. In the spring was, and I can, I can really only speak with any, you know, expert, expertise about the elementary experience because of my children's age, but but you know, the spring was one version of distance learning. This is But you know, the spring was one version of distance learning, this has been another version of distance learning. They are completely different animals from the normal school year. And you know, my sense is that there's a real question to ask about rigor that may be based on. The quest type of questions and the timing, but may also be based on some substantial portion of the students feeling that. They want to dive deeper into their subject matter and want to be challenged in a different way, and I just feel like that's something that's good to acknowledge. As part of a real question about critical thinking and project-based learning, you know, in the elementary context anyway and. You know, the teaching of critical thinking and students feeling that they're being stretched in their mind. Because students know and can tell you when they are working hard and really riding. An edge of, you know, learning and they would say that if that was their experience. So I I know where there's many factors here, but I just want to raise that.
One thing I want to quickly say, this is Erin, that, you know, we're talking about how we use this as part of the LCAP process, as part of the strategic planning and LCAP process. And getting some guidance from the folks at Youth Truth about that, so. You know, the questionnaire is one thing and then, you know. To trustee McAllister's point, one thing that we do and I know. Bill has been doing this year, as has Connie at the high school, is continuing to do focus groups with students. We did a little more of it at the junior high when we had a dean there and, you know, we certainly asked those questions. In the, you know, we'd call it youth voices and in order to do the kind of empathy interview and and focus group, some of the stuff. You saw that came out of the convening, the SCO convening about about rigor and really just asking kids those pointed questions, so. Know that this is, we're we're learning a lot of really cool stuff and how to use this as part of strategic planning for LCAP, I want you to hear that and also. How does filling out a survey data combine with some of the more in-depth empty interviews and focus groups? That we've conducted and want to continue with students, so. It's a roller coaster, yeah.
And I I should say we've never surveyed third and fourth graders before. You know, so thinking about California healthy kids, we've only surveyed fifth, seventh, ninth and eleventh. So this is kind of a new territory for us too and. As Erin said, there's a lot of different ways we can approach sharing the data and using the data. And we've just had some competing priorities, you know, for a little while. So I look forward to doing this, though.
I think it's awesome to ask, you know, the younger students directly what their experiences, I think they tell you a lot about their experience and and. A lot that informs, you know, the kind of choices that are made across the board, so I think it's wonderful to include their. Survey results and their voices to whatever extent that's possible.
Yeah, this survey is actually a much safer survey for younger children, so Healthy Kids Survey can kind of be. PG thirteen for kind of some of the stuff it asks, and so we actively choose not to do it with the younger kids, so it's. This is a better, a better tool, I agree.
I I have to say, it's a lot to unpack and I'm having, I mean, but not, I mean, I like the format. It seems a lot more straightforward than the Healthy Kids, like literally eighty million data points. But it's really hard to know what to do with that data from April. And it, and I don't even know that we're going to have any better idea of what to do with data from January. And by the time we actually could do something about it, hopefully we're out of this.
Start over, yeah.
Right, and then what does it even mean, so it's really hard to know how to use this, it's really hard. I mean, at this point in time, but.
Yeah, it's dipstick data, that's what we'd call it at Cal, right, you're you're dipsticking in at a point in time and it's really hard to do trend analysis. With stuff like this because of the changing context.
Exactly, but I do think it has a lot more potential moving forward for getting a better, like, I don't know. Better than a dipstick, a litmus test, no, a better summary of what's happening. I I really also, well, a couple of things, I I'd like to see us either as a board or in policy, understanding what question, what do we. What do we need to know? To look at that culture, the health of our kids, Bob, I mean, all of these things that create this whole student approach. And then how does this data answer those questions, right? And then the second part is, one, I don't know, probably not this year, but maybe next year, maybe a study session on this. Where we really can dive into it and understand what does it mean? And let's look at rigor and let's look at culture and let's look at discrepancies between white and Latinx and. I mean, I think this really demands a lot more time and attention, I just don't know quite what to do with that. With April and January.
Good, two, two, two good things that I think will help us in both endeavors is we will be, as Diane alluded to. There's a cohort of Sonoma County Schools doing it, and so we have this partner in it to do some thinking with, and then Youth Truth is actually fantastic. Their staff really will break down, like, they will run the study session for us. That would be, I think, a benefit also, and again, I agree with you, we probably need to have more meaningful data. To really dive in, but it I think would be a good exercise for us to do moving forward, so.
That Bill is planning on using their data with his student, as Erin alluded to, his student focus groups, and I think that's. That's the part that I am most interested in, how do the students know that we are, we do want to take action on the. On the feedback that you've given us and that your voice does matter, these surveys are important. They're not just for the sake of serving, we we are going to action that data. We just don't quite know how right now, but we will, but we want to give them feedback, this is what you said, does this seem accurate? And Bill was going to test that out with his focus groups.
Thank you Diane.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving in the right direction, for sure.
All right, so next on the agenda is we have reports, do we have a half report tonight?
I don't see anybody from half still on, I don't think they came. Robin, I am so sorry, it is so late. We did not, and we are actually only halfway through the agenda, so we didn't anticipate this, so, but please.
That's okay, I was cheating and doing grading.
I was hoping you were because I know it's a heavy lift this week, so.
So the teachers have been really, really busy, so the only report that I have is that teachers at all sites. Are working very hard, extremely hard, harder than ever. And the teachers have been really having to get creative to engage their students. And the teachers are constantly thinking outside of the box every single minute, just to make distance warning, learning work for their kids. It's hard. And their teachers are working really hard, thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
And we hope that they they get a great break and can catch their breath a little bit over these two weeks, which I know is insufficient, but. Hopefully it helps. Very grateful for all of them.
Yes, thank you all, thank you, Robin. CSDA report.
Nope, I don't see any of their officers on.
Okay, Board of Trustees. Oh, sorry, Student Trustee Report.
So unfortunately, because of everything that's happened in the last month, there is not much to report on, but. What I can tell you is the movie night obviously got canceled. We're going to try to reschedule it to April. When hopefully, knock on wood, we're back in person and there's a vaccine now. But we'll see on that and then Senior Sunset was also canceled and we're going to do a similar thing. And with the student situation, you guys pretty much talked about it and. That's all I got, guys.
All right, Board of Trustees.
Do we have time?
But we could say, let's talk about CSBA next time, maybe.
All right, so let's move on then, if that's okay with everyone, we'll move on to fourteen point two A Hillsborough Unified School District Safe School Plan. Discussion item.
Debbie, are you still there? You're muted.
You're muted, Debbie.
Debbie was joking that we wouldn't get to her first item until eight thirty and we we were even worse than she thought.
It's her fault.
I could do it in fifteen minutes. This is the school safety plan, this is a first reading for the update for the school safety plan.
Yeah, Karen's in the wrong. Yeah.
It's what you have in front of you is pretty much an update of the ICS forums for each of the sites, which is putting new people in charge of different positions. We still have to do drills and everything like we would normally do if the if the kids were present, so all the sites are preparing for that. The biggest difference in our safety plan this year will be the health and safety plan. And that's attached in your packet and that's been a lot of work mostly by Diane Conger and both of our nurses. It's still in a draft stage, but it is being reviewed by everybody and updated weekly as things change.
Deb, real quick, you don't have a, you don't have a presentation for this, the safety plan, right?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you.
First read to let you know what we're doing and what we're updating. I would come back in February with it after the Police Department and Fire Department review everything. And we have to have a final approval before March first. So this is just a discussion item at this point. Any questions?
And so for Crystal and Rose, this is an annual item that we normally go through and it's it's like, as Debbie mentioned, it's a little weird this year. Because we don't do fire drills and earthquake drills with kids, so, but we still are required to have all the updates, so.
And then typically, when we have the meeting in person, we bring the entire binder to the meeting, it's it's about. Seventy inches thick, it's it's a lot of paper. But it's a lot, it's a lot of work that goes in there.
Just a point on the high school evacuation drill, I just noted that a couple of months are not completed, assuming they will be. Not completed as in not filled in and I realize. We're in COVID.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and they don't necessarily do something every single month.
They have January and then nothing after that.
Yeah, he just hasn't got that far yet because he's hoping that students will return on campus.
And he's just sharing with the school site council, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you, Debbie, any questions, comments? Faster than fifteen minutes, thanks.
She means for everything.
I'll do it, okay.
Okay, so any, so no other questions on the just the district safe school plan? Okay, moving on to the positive certification of ability to meet financial obligations at first interim.
Now, this has a presentation. Now, I think I have it at the wrong. Have to back up, sorry, oh, boy, Karen. Do this for Debbie.
Okay, so this first slide is just an introduction to the budget cycle and I know we have new trustees and I wanted to explain a little bit. Where we're at in the cycle. So we we begin with our budget and then we have the unotted actuals, which we did in September, which is the closing of the nineteen twenty school year. Now we've moved to our first interim report and this is the first time we actually revise all of the budgets. To where we're actually at since the original budget, now we've got our our true beginning figures, our ending figures from nineteen twenty. So there's a lot of change that happens about now. After this, we'll move forward with the governor's budget and then I'll come back in March with the second interim budget report. Okay. So the first interim report is just a snapshot in time. The timing is it's July one through October thirty-first and we have to report it by December fifteenth to the County Office of Education. So what's changed since the initial budget? So the nineteen twenty ending balance, we projected would be one point five million and it was actually two point eight million. A difference of one point two million and it left us with a reserve percentage of twenty-three point three four percent. Great news. The CARES Act funding is a big piece of this. We've received one point two million, we're fully budgeted at that amount, but it's split between Hillsburg Unified School District and the Charter School. As you can see, we received hundred and ten thousand for the Charter School and that money right now is in our budget, but it's possible that we could have to return that. As of today, California Department of Education cannot give us an answer and they've advised us to use it as it was given to us. But I just want to mention that we may have to pay that back. So to date, we've spent seven hundred and fifty thousand, we've been trying hard to spend the funds. Because the biggest pot of funds needs to be spent by December thirtieth. And we've done a pretty good job of that with a lot of the technology we've purchased in the district. And I'll be coming back at the next board meeting with exactly where we're at with figures, I haven't balanced it yet. So right now we have four hundred and seventy-nine thousand left in CARES funds.
And that has to be spent by when?
Just, just this eight hundred thousand needs to be spent by December thirtieth, not all of the four seventy-nine has to. There's tier dates, September, October, they go to twenty-one, some go into twenty-two.
We have, we have a plan for that, there's no, we're not going to surrender money because we didn't spend it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So here's a snapshot of what the unrestricted looks like, so the first column is the initial budget. The second column is where we're at now and the third column is showing you the variance. So the biggest, the biggest piece there is the beginning budget, we started with one point five and it was really two point eight. So that was a big difference, so in the in the initial budget, we thought we would end the year with a twelve percent reserve, right now we're at a thirteen point two nine. Revenues are pretty much the same, salaries and benefits have increased, expenditures have increased. And. That's just a snapshot of it, you can move forward, Karen. There's a little more detail. This breaks it out by revenues, expenditures and where we're spending. Look at my notes here. Couple of things I wanted to point out was the. The state revenues is lower and that's due to the mandated block grant and lottery. That has to do with the Charter School closing, that's based off of our ADA. And our ADA is considerably lower without the Charter School, even though we still have the students. They use the ADA from last year, so they're not counting the Charter School students. So that's lower this year, but it'll pick up moving forward after this year, it's just a one-year hit.
And that, that is the exact same logic that applies to the CARES money, right, that potentially we'd have to.
Correct, correct. The salaries have increased quite a bit because of the the great raise we got. They also went up a lot between initial budget and first interim because of the one-time bonus that everybody received in the district. Expenditures. I I think we're a little bit overstated, we'll see how that goes. I'm not quite sure how it, how it's going to play moving forward, depending on if students return to in-person learning or not. So I've kept the original budget there for books and supplies and other operating services. So as you can see, the net for the year deficit spending is one point nine million. We were expecting it to be large this year because of the raises. And as you can see, as we move forward, that'll get better and better. Karen. So this is showing the different components and where we're at with Fund seventeen and where the reserves will be at the end of this year. In the following two years, that's an estimate, I wanted to show that at the bottom, I just put a little clip there of first interim. This time last year, we were showing net for the year would be one point seven million with a reserve percentage of fifteen point six. And we actually, as I just showed in the previous slide, finished the year at twenty-three, or yeah, twenty-three percent. So it just shows you that it's it's just a glimpse in time and we really don't know for sure.
Debbie, what is, what is Fund seventeen?
That's our, that's our savings account.
That's our reserve. But the, the other thing I think that this slide shows is Debbie taking a conservative approach with the books, right? So there's going to be some costs that are slightly overstated and there's going to be income. You know, we've talked ad nauseam about how hard it is to forecast property tax income. So we tend to be conservative in estimating it in the future. So that's what happened last year and we ended up in a good place. And we were able to give an extra raise to our employees as a result because we had some trigger language built in. So again, I'm not alarmed by this. We're in the black. It's good. And I think things will be better at the end of the year, hopefully, although we are in this weird pandemic. And nobody really knows how things are going to flesh out, so.
So what's new in the first interim? In the budgets, the carryover budgets have been added. We've had a increase in special education expenditures and the salaries have increased due to the one-time bonus payment. We've had an increase in staffing, mostly due to what's going on with the pandemic. But it, it's, it's been quite a bit of an increase. Karen? So in summary, the revenues are a little bit conservative. We'll be hearing in the next week or two what our first installment is on RDA. Expenses are maybe a little bit high. I'm actually not sure. I wanted to keep them the same as the initial budget and wait till the governor's budget in January and tighten them up a lot tighter at the second interim. Hopefully we know a little bit more. I think we'll definitely close the year with a higher ending balance. But with all that said, our reserves will still be at three point two nine percent in twenty twenty one and eight point eight three in twenty one, twenty two, which is a positive certification at first interim.
And Debbie, that's assuming, there's a lot of assumptions in those two and three years out. But that would not, that doesn't include any raises that we'd be looking at for those years, correct?
Correct.
That's pre, pre-raise. And special ed, sorry, since you just said that in the last slide, I noticed in your, in the summary, the written summary, three million over. Is that? Like it's over what, what we, what, what? Can you explain that?
The contribution at the end of the year? You mean on the whole year? Yeah. Last year it was, let me look at my report. Last year was two point nine, I believe. That's typical for the district.
Encroachment, right?
We also have a lot of unknowns in special education with our NCC program.
Right, right. We don't know till the year's over.
We don't have any preliminary figures. We don't know if, you know, what's going to happen with the transportation charges. I can't get an answer from Windsor right now. So I've kept it all budgeted the same as it was. Because I'd rather be safe than not have the money later.
Yeah, for sure. Okay.
Next slide, Karen. So what's next? The monitor, the, the fiscal health expenditures, the governor's budget and the second interim report in March. I think the biggest thing is the uncertainties. When will we reopen? Little's known about the state's budget moving forward. Impact on property taxes. If we start receiving late payments, how's that going to affect us? Our cash flow, very important right now. All of the federal incomes are on deferrals. We're not receiving the money when, when we, you know, normally would. They're a year, a year and a half out. And then declining enrollment. We're down to thirteen hundred and seventeen students and we will probably be under thirteen hundred next year.
We need to just take a brief pause and vote to extend the meeting past nine o'clock. You didn't make it, Debbie. It's all good.
She's got two minutes.
So can we, can I get a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Are you there, Arsalie? I kind of jumped in and took over. You're muted. There you go.
I know, I couldn't get my mute button to work. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so fifty-one minutes to the clock.
Back to Debbie. So can I, can I jump in real quick? The, there is a, one thing that is a big unknown for us is property taxes. So the, the deadline for property taxes is extended by the state and we don't really know what that means. We've received sort of preliminary assurances that the county will keep us whole. But we are worried about the potential for there not to be enough funds coming in and us having cash flow issues that crop up when we get those, those tax funds supposedly coming in. So that is something that across the state, community-funded districts are worried about. So it'll be, and nobody really knows how to, and think about it because it's never happened before. So it'll be interesting to see how it's handled.
So Debbie, I have a quick question. And I can't remember the number, so I apologize. But my understanding is because of income taxes, we're expecting a big boost in education. And I don't want to throw out the number that I'm thinking, but it's supposed, does any of that come to us and that we're community-funded?
Depends how it's allotted. Sorry, Debbie, I'm.
Oh, I was going to say, I don't think we know at this time.
Yeah, and I mean, so the governor, like if they just raised base LCFF funds, then we wouldn't get much of it, right? But if they did different funds for, sometimes they do things that don't come through LCFF, that everybody gets a per-student allotment. And I've seen some suggestions that that may happen. There, there's talk at the state of potentially helping to pay for that, you know, for us, a three million dollar encroachment, special education on the general fund. So it's an unfunded mandate and the state's starting to make good on those mandates instead of paying a quarter to the dollar that they mandate. So we will see what comes out, but there's really, right now, I don't think anyone really actually knows what to expect. And January is going to certainly be an interesting time when the governor comes out with his budget and what, what's represented, so.
I think with everything said, we are in a lot better shape than a lot of other districts. And we're lucky where our revenue comes from. And I feel pretty confident it'll be better at second interim.
Welcome, Crystal and Rose, to school finance.
There'll be a test at nine thirty.
Any other questions or comments for Debbie?
Debbie, when is audited, the audited actials, when, when, on your calendar of?
It was extended this year to March. I just spoke to the auditors the other day and they said they were going to try real hard to get me something by January. So hopefully, I don't think I'll have a January board meeting, but hopefully February.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, anybody ready to make a motion to approve the positive certification of of our first interim?
I'll move.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Crystal. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, the next one is the twenty twenty one LCFF, the Local Control Funding Formula Budget Overview for Parents.
LCFF Budget Overview for Parents. It's, it's a document to show fiscal transparency. Beginning in nineteen twenty is when they started using the budget overview. But this was all with the LCAP. Due to the pandemic, the LCAP was waived. So now this is tied into the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan. And this needs to be adopted at first interim. So the report shows you the projected revenue by fund source, which is pretty much what we just discussed, but in a different, different visual.
So for us, LCFF means property.
One point three million in the supplemental and concentration grant that we spend on our high-needs students. Karen?
Sorry.
Yeah, so Donna, you were right. LCFF is property taxes. And supplemental concentration is property taxes. But there's a, there's a threshold that we have to meet as required by law of dedicated services that we target specific groups of students with.
Yeah, I think that's what we're saying. So like, we don't get more money, right? That people think, oh, Grant, it's not more. It's what we get, period. But we have to spend X dollars on our English learners, low-income or too big, unduplicated populations, quote unquote.
So in twenty twenty one, we budgeted the five hundred and sixty-five thousand in the Learning Continuity Plan. And four hundred and eighty-one.
Oh, sorry, Karen. I'm sorry.
Four hundred and eighty-one thousand of it was placed for high-needs students. Most of that at that time, this was a glimpse in time when we did this. We didn't have a lot of knowledge of what we were going to need at that point in time. And most of these expenditures have actually been used with CARES funding on technology, Chromebooks, hotspots, headsets, technology materials, curriculum. Karen? But this is a better view of how we spend the funds. This is what we spent in nineteen twenty. So this shows you that we had, we had budgeted two point one million two one two seven and we actually spent two one five eight. So it shows you that we are definitely spending the amount that we are allotted to spend on high-needs students.
And that, is that all?
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is just showing you that we are spending the amount of money that we are required to spend on our high-needs students. Is there any questions?
We do need to approve the parent overview.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Thanks. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Question passes. Next is the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two Budget Development Calendar.
So this is just a budget calendar that needs to be board-approved every year. It just shows you a timeline of how we develop the budget.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty much just a different way of showing you the first slide in the first interim report. Is there any questions about it?
Looks like a lot of work.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, personnel. Thank you so much, Debbie.
Thank you. Oops, oh, Chris, we're out of time.
Oh.
Bye, guys.
Funny.
All right, personnel. Ratification of Superintendent's Employment Agreement.
I think now is when someone ends the Zoom and it cuts us all off. Chris?
Exactly. That's what Debbie was saying. We're out of time. So this is a, you know, you have completed my evaluation and I talked to Donna about it on the phone. And, you know, there's no surprises in this agreement. It's per contract and not different than anybody else in the district got, so.
Well, I definitely, I mean, unless we have a lot to talk about, I definitely move that we approve the contract and extend you another year. It's like a rolling year extension, right? It's always three years from now, from whatever, for the next three years, just so everyone understands. And that you get the same raise percentage that the staff gets here. We're not, you don't get any more or any less.
All right. So do we have a motion to approve?
I think.
I may not have said it.
I couldn't hear a thing you guys said. You guys are talking over each other.
Oh, I thought Donna made a motion when she said.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And I can, I can.
Donna, do you have a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Thank you, Rose. Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Chris, for your leadership. We really appreciate you having you on board. We feel very lucky to have you and thank you for all your work.
No, thank you. I appreciate the support and appreciate the new board. Like you made it through your first meeting.
Yay.
Yeah.
It was a student of mine. I'm like so proud.
Wasn't she great? Yeah. That was awesome.
And Rose, yay, I'm so happy you're with us.
Thank you so much. I'm so happy to be here. Thank you.
All right, everyone. So that is the end of our agenda, right?
We've got another six minutes on the agenda.
Really?
All right.
I know for a minute there, I thought, how much more do we have at nine? Yeah, but we're, we're okay now. Yeah.
So I think we are good. Where our next meeting is on Wednesday, January twentieth.
That's our next regular. We do have a special closed session meeting tomorrow at four thirty, as a reminder. And while you're here, Mike, you can make it. Arsalie, right? You can make it. Arsalie, you'll be there?
Yes.
Donna will be there. Rose, you can make it also, right?
Yeah.
So can you?
I can make it. Yeah, four thirty, right?
Yeah, shouldn't be more than a half an hour or so.
Okay. I have tutoring right before that, so I'll try to make it.
And if you're late, it's cool. Just drop in.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, everyone. Well, thank you for being here. And I think that's the conclusion of our agenda. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you all.